The Governor's Proclamation here that in Missouri, and I'll read from here. School Board Recognition Week in Missouri, and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve our public schools through quality leadership. In testimony whereof, I hereby intend to set my hand and cause to be effects the great seal of the state of Missouri and the city of Jefferson City. So I have here to recognize each of our school board members, to present them here as certificate, recognizing them for their time and efforts in that large paycheck they get for being on the school board as volunteers. Anyway, so Steve Bruce is our board president, so thank you Steve. Appreciate that. Thank you. Rich Abashon is our vice president. He's our here decision. We'll get that to him. Lorelai Spurk is our treasurer. Thank you Lorelai.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have members. All right. Lindsey Rowley. Thank you Lindsey. Thank you. Lori Massman, member. Thank you. Ken Inlow. Thank you, member. And Scott Hopez. Member. Thank you. I would just like to say the time that they do spend does not go unnoticed, so I thank you personally, and I know our community. Thank you.
We have Eagle Scout Troop One from United Methodist Church.
Yes, we have here this evening with us Roger Hatfield, and brought some individuals, I believe, with them with the Eagle Scout Troop One, and we just want to recognize them. They led us tonight in our pledge of allegiance, and so if they would stand, we would just like to recognize and thank you guys again for joining us.
Their attendance here tonight is to help with their Eagle Scout badge, is that correct? Okay.
Roger, just for a quick second, could you, would you mind just sharing with the room and with the board, just some of the things that the scouts have been involved in the past year?
Sorry to put you on the hot seat.
These boys are working on their communications merit badge, which is an Eagle level badge like many of them are, not all of them are. And so they're doing public speaking, and they're writing speeches, they're trying to listen critically, and this is required participation to attend a public forum, a public meeting. So we could have chosen the state legislature or the city council, but we want to favor you by coming here.
Thank you.
The boys love the school system. And so they get to see firsthand the heartbeat of how our system here works. And we wanted to come on a night where there was opinions that were not the same. And so this certainly was a good night to do that, as you're in the final stages of shoring up a lot of calendar and time changes and things like that. So we had four, five Eagle Scouts last year, and we just did Scout Sunday at the church, and then these young men are going to be getting their Eagle the next two years or perhaps two free. So this community produces a lot of Eagle Scouts, we're proud to be some of them.
Thank you.
Right there in attendance tonight. Moving on to difference makers.
Yes, absolutely. We started recognizing difference makers, and a difference maker is pretty simple, somebody that makes a difference, and I know I didn't mean to get too elementary. But at the end of the day, our true difference makers are you that are joining us here tonight because you care about our schools, and that's awesome, and you're making a difference by being here, even if we don't always agree. We can agree to disagree on many things, but working through that in a respectful manner. So I appreciate you being here, you are making a difference. Our staff, over the last four years, we have our pictures over the last four years, those are our difference makers here on the wall each year, and we're excited to do that. I remember that first year, folks said a staff photo like everybody, and they said it'd be like herding cats. So if you can see of the J C at that far right when it's a little heavy on the toe of the J, that's just where everybody walked, and they were probably like, are we really going to do this? But it turned out awesome, and so we've done that each year, and hopefully something that our folks look forward to, but those are the true difference makers. And all of our educators that are in our school system that are here in the audience, would you please stand, if you're an educator, for our school system here tonight? Would you please stand? So you didn't know that you were going to be recognized in that, but you guys are true difference makers, so I appreciate you being here. So we have three pillars as a school district, learning, partnership, and stewardship, so we recognize each month someone each, someone within each of those three pillars. Tonight, we have within our learning pillar, Lori, Ross, if you'd come forward, and she has somebody she wants to introduce under our learning pillar that's making a difference.
Well, tonight underneath the learning pillar, we want to recognize Darian Wardenhousen. She is a special education teacher at Lawson Elementary. She's in her first year. She teaches students with severe autism, and they are the highest level of severity in our district. She is being recognized, this write-up tonight was from a colleague, Kelly Markway, and she said this about Darian. "To be a great teacher, you have to be kind, caring, compassionate, and loving. To be a special education teacher to students with severe autism, you have to be all of those things and more. You have to truly be an advocate. Darian is exactly that. Every day, she is advocating for her students, whether it is advocating for her students in the hallway, making sure other students and teachers understand the abilities of her students and treat them with equality and respect, or advocating for her students' basic needs, making sure they have shoes, coats in the winter, and buddy packs sent home. She is always advocating, which is especially important with her students, as they are not able to advocate for themselves. That is what makes her so special. Unfortunately, statistics show that post-secondary outcomes of students with severe autism are very bleak. Darian is empowering her students at a very young age and making sure they can reach their potential by giving them all the opportunity, education, and most of all, love and support that she can." And then Kelly finishes with a quote from Dr. Seuss. "Unless someone likes, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." And so we are very proud that Darian Wardenhousen is one of our success stories, her first year at Jefferson City Public Schools.
Congratulations. You're good, no, you're good. Okay, next we have within our partnerships pillars, we have Dr. Brian Shindorff, he's our chief of learning, and so forward here.
Okay, it's my honor to get to recognize a large group of school counselors, and so before I start and read about them, if you are a school counselor, would you come stand up here with me?
Lindsey, watch that one, you might slip out the door.
Oh, yeah. Get your girl on the tripod, you'll be on the news.
How many more days? What's her day?
For your...
But he forgets some days, and then he's got to deal with it.
You need to be around.
There we go.
Okay.
Vee right up here.
You guys should have waited to call a couple of them up here, I don't know. The National School Counselors Week, sponsored by the American School Counselor Association, focuses public attention on the unique contributions of professional school counselors within U.S. school systems, and how students are different as a result of what school counselors do. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. Jeff City Public Schools celebrates and recognizes National School Counselor Week, February 4th through the 8th. Our school counselors work with all students to remove barriers to learn by addressing students' academic concerns, career awareness in post-secondary options, and social emotional skills. Comprehensive school counseling programs help to increase student achievement and provide a much-needed resource for students, parents, teachers, and administrators. JCPS conducted a social media campaign calling attention to the countless benefits of our comprehensive school counseling program. We currently have 29 school counselors, and we are proud of every one of them, so thank you for what you do.
There you two just jumped over.
You should have jumped over.
Make sure you hear shit.
And yeah, you guys can stay.
Why didn't you just jump?
Where are you going?
Make a hurdle.
We're welcome to stay.
I would have, I should have.
See ya.
We're glad you're in the company.
You would have pushed it, wouldn't you?
So thank you, thank you to our counselors.
Squeezed it, squeezed it.
He's still the tallest.
The stewardship pillar, I'm going to recognize someone.
And the ugliest.
I received an email, and I'll ask if Nate, if you would just stand, then you can sit
Thank you, everyone. Three.
back down, I don't want to embarrass you.
Come on in.
Thank you.
So this is Nate Brinkley, he works at East School, and he is a difference maker, so
Hey, long time no see.
Thank you.
Always.
I'll have something here to present you in a second.
The room is so...
I will read to you an email that I received from a patron that I have not met. Her name is Catherine Hughes, and she's a community member, and here's her email that she sent to me. She said, "About three weeks ago, I was curbside in front of my house trying to hoist three 40-pound bags of topsoil up 12 steps. It was very tough going. Suddenly, a car stopped, a man got out, he walked over at the big smile and said, 'Let me help you.' He took the bags up to where I needed them, then introduced himself, said he works at East School, and if I ever needed any help, just to contact him. He said, 'I did not contact this generous man, but today, at a later date, as he was en route to work at the school, he rang my doorbell and was smiling again, or still smiling, as I believe her email says, and said, 'I stopped to see if there's anything I could do for you.' His name is Nate Brinkley, and I'm writing to praise his generosity, his thoughtfulness, kindness, polite demeanor, friendliness, all-around goodness, and to say what a grand PR guy he is for JCPS. I thought you would like to know, and I hope you'll find a way to honor Mr. Brinkley. We need more people like him. Thank God he's here in Jeff City and at nearby East School." Thank you again. Thank you. You know, when you have folks that just do the right thing regardless of who's watching, regardless, I mean, that's just, that says it all, so thank you again to Nate. So that's all tonight, as far as specifically recognizing what regards to difference maker.
Moving on down the dinner, we need to report some communications. We have to report through chief of learning, Dr. Brian Shindorff. If I follow in all of that, Brian?
Yeah. I'll just say, somebody did a good job hiring that guy.
No kidding.
Next.
Wow. He just said that.
Yeah. That's all I've got.
Okay, I also want to give you a few updates on some things we've been working on. One, the seven-period day, as you know, we've been working on that and moving forward with seven-period day, and so some of the things that have been accomplished are that the students currently enrolled in grades eight through 11 have been rolled into the appropriate 19-20 calendar. That's been accomplished. Our schools have been working on their bell schedules and their period times. We've made course adjustments. Most of the courses had to be adjusted to change, obviously, from term courses to semester, and the majority of that work has been completed. And so most of the incoming nine through 12 students will have their course request cards turned into the counseling office actually this week, and so that work has been done to date, from what I hear. We've, it has gone well, things have transitioned without incident, and so we're just happy that we're moving forward with getting that accomplished, and wanted to just give you an update. So any questions about the seven-period? We will continue to...
Brian, at some point, are we going to talk about curriculum changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we will. So we're in the process now of identifying exactly what all those needs are, what things need to change. We've got some cases where we probably need to pull some things apart, and some we need to put together, so we're working on that.
Okay, thanks.
In terms of drug testing, I know last month, we talked about drug testing and the desire for us to get away from the announced bulk testing and rely solely on the random testing, and during that conversation, Lorelai, you had mentioned concerns about in situations where we may have students who might have drugs in their system and required to or opt to use some kind of a counseling program for that, that we may have students who don't have access to those programs because of their location and because of cost. And so we've been trying to find solutions to that. I can tell you that in conversations with Joyce Sweeney, who you just heard from a little bit ago, she's assured us that our current program, our Second Chance Program that's offered through JCAC, that that program, we could utilize that program, which would be local, and it would be free of charge, and so we believe we have a solution for any student who might need those services here locally and free of charge. So we believe we have solutions to that. And so I just would reiterate that our, really the primary change for the drug testing is that we just eliminate the bulk testing and that we rely solely on the random testing, which would happen about every five weeks, seven events throughout the year, that we would do the random testing, we would reduce the overall number of students being tested, obviously, but we believe that the random testing model would allow us what we want to accomplish, and that is to ensure a system that monitors and encourages drug-free students, but is one that's reasonable and manageable on our part. So what I would propose is that you allow us to move forward with making changes to our current policy, which, when looking at our, at our policy that we have now, policy JFCI, we believe the only real significant changes would be to eliminate, to reduce or eliminate the pieces written in there about bulk testing, and just clean up a little bit of language, so not a lot of significant changes, but we would propose to make those changes, and then take those to the board policy committee for review before it comes here to the board for approval, so.
Thank you. I appreciate your finding solutions.
Could I maybe just, yourself or Gary, I know some questions on the tightening up of from when if students are going to be randomly chosen from that time from when they are notified to getting to the office of some things. I know we're looking, trying to tighten that as well.
We are. So right now, the A.D.'s report that it takes approximately about 20 minutes from the time that a student gets identified by name, it's time they get to where they need to go, they perform the test, and then released and get back, about 20 minutes, and so we're working on ways to reduce that. Now, right now, it's a problem because of the construction and all that kind of stuff, but we believe we have the ability to shorten that timeframe. And in fact, by just the proposals being made with the random testing, the A.D.'s actually do it by the number of minutes, instructional minutes that are used up. Currently, right now, they calculate that we consume approximately 25,000 minutes of instructional time throughout a school year, that we could, we could cut that in half to less than half, at about 11,000. So we do believe we have the ability, not just to clean up our drugs monitoring system, but also keep kids in the classroom longer.
Thank you.
Brian, just one other question. So is the system we're looking at, is it a computer-generated model in terms of identifying students that are going to be selected, so that we can assure patrons that there's no handpicking or anything of...
So that question has come up, there are some that don't understand that that is exactly how it works, for when we, when we decide on the company that does that, all we do is we take, the students are actually converted into a number, and so those numbers then are provided to our drug testing company, and that company plugs them into a computer, just numbers, not names. And they are the ones who do the random number selection, and then those numbers come back. So nobody at the school site is choosing names or numbers, and the folks that are choosing them only have numbers and not names. It is possible, though, that a number could be chosen, especially if you're in multiple sports, that you could be chosen, it could appear that way, but I can assure you that we are not choosing those.
So it's a random system?
It is.
Okay, great.
Okay, another topic we want to begin discussion is the use of cell phones in our schools, and so it's a conversation that's been going on for some time, and honestly, our, it started for us, Bob James, our high school principal, came to Mr. Frisloys and had mentioned that it's time for us to start having conversations about the use of cell phones in the classroom, and I know others have had conversations about that. So we have been talking with our administration about what are the concerns with the use of cell phones. Probably the primary concern we have right now is that across this district, there's a lot of inconsistency. So the expectations at LC are much different than the expectations are at Simonson or at TJ or at the high school, and so we have a lot of inconsistencies that are going on across the district. And right now, that's because we allow the schools to choose what it's going to look like, whether or not students are allowed to have their cell phones out in class, or they're not, can they have them out at lunch, can they have them in passing, or can, or are they not allowed to have them out at all? And so we have a lot of inconsistencies. But probably more important is the fact that our staff report that cell phones are becoming more and more an issue, a disruption and a distraction in the classroom, in the ones that allow use in the classrooms. What we want is, we want to come up with a system that is going to be, reflect what it is that we expect and want from our students in the classroom. When the question is posed to our staff, is there anything that's happening in the classroom today that cannot be conducted with the, with the device that's being given to you by the district, the Chromebook? Is there anything that a teacher's asking a student to do that the Chromebook can do? And to date, we've heard nothing but no. The Chromebook will do everything that we've asked it to do. Now, the Chromebook does have a little bit of issues with some video, but we've covered that by providing iPads, but we don't have any situations where students are being asked to do things that would require a cellphone. And I think that's important, because if it's not required in the classroom, and it is a distraction in the classroom, I think we have an obligation to consider what is our stance. Now, we have a policy, that's EHB, but EHB is a policy that talks about technology use in relation to district-issued technology. So when we talked to MSBA about it, they actually, if you look back in the history of EHB, back in 2007, MSBA actually came out with a recommendation for policy EHB for the administrative procedures that literally said in 2007 that students should not access cellphone, should not have cellphone usage in the classroom. That was in 2007. In 2012, they came back and they removed that language from the policy, and they said that the reason they removed it from the policy is because if you look at EHB, EHB has nothing to do with personal devices. EHB is all about district-issue, and cell phones are not district-issue, so they believed they had an obligation to remove that language from the policy, and stated that it's best if districts, if they have a concern with cellphone usage, embed that into JGR, which is your discipline policy. So in 2012, personal cellphone usage came out of the language in EHB. And today, our policy, EHB, only, only talks about district-issue devices. So I'm not proposing that we put personal device language in EHB. What I'm proposing is that we, that we consider either creating some AP language that is applied to JGR, which is the, our current discipline, and here's what it currently says, "Technology misconduct. Unauthorized use of cellular telephones, personal computers, or unauthorized use of electronic devices during instructional time." And then we list the consequences, so first offense and subsequent offenses, and what would happen if you use those, and it's usually conferences, or take the device, or expect a parent to come get those. So we currently have language in here about how we manage if a student's using it appropriately. What we don't have is, is a philosophy of what this district believes, should students be allowed to have personal devices in the classroom or not. And I think that what our building administration is asking, asking for is for us to be consistent. I believe we need some kind of a district philosophy about whether we believe students need to have their cell phones out in classrooms or not. We currently don't have that. So I guess I would open up for discussion, for direction for me, as I move forward with what to do next. My preference would be that we, that you give us the directive to move forward with having a conversation about creating administrative procedures that outline a philosophy that we don't believe personal cell phones are needed in the classroom. That's just my opinion, but I'm open to direction as we move forward. I can tell you that from our building principal standpoint, the majority of them feel the same way, that it would help with classroom management and discipline if we had something with a little more teeth to it than what we currently have.
And if I could interject before you're, in our last ACDC or with all of our principals, we were going to follow up at our next principal meeting here with all of our principals on bringing back what they're currently doing, what's working, what's not, to make sure, because at the end of the day, our principals have to, they're going to be the one carrying it out, and if it's a disruption in the learning environment, working through that process. So just wanted to give you that.
I will add, because you might say, well, if it is a problem in the classroom, why doesn't the building just make the decision to tell students that they are not allowed to use them in the classroom? And some of our staff will tell you that right now, it is an incredible battle, and you just need to know that, that we have a lot of patrons who believe their child should have access to their phone all day long, and if they need it to be contacted, that they could pull that out of their pocket, and they could text, and we have, we have a lot of parents that feel that way for safety reasons. And so right now, staff are hesitant to make a change without some form of district policy, because there will be concerns about whether or not we should or should not allow students to have them. And we're not proposing that students are not allowed to have a phone in school. What we're suggesting is that they're not necessary during class time.
That was my next question, then you answered that one, so.
LC currently has a policy that allows students to bring their device to school, and it's be kept out of sight all throughout the school day or within your locker, and that's their current policy. So no use in the classroom hallways or passing time.
And how's that working there?
So when I asked Deanne, she heard me, she took off. I asked, I asked Deanne, if I, if I intentionally came to your school, how often would I see kids on their phones? And she said, "It does still happen occasionally, but it is infrequent," and she said, "The number of times that students get sent to her office for use of phones is minimal," that it is not, that they have actually believed that the system works and works well at LC.
Is that something she implemented at the beginning of the year, or its semester?
It's been in place now for two, a little over two, for two years. So what they did was LC actually started with... more teeth to it than what we currently have.
And if I could interject before your, at our last ACDC or with all of our principals, we were going to follow up at our next principal meeting here with all of our principals on bringing back what they're currently doing, what's working, what's not, to make sure. Because at the end of the day, our principals have to, they're going to be the one carrying it out. And if it's a disruption in the learning environment, working through that process. So just wanted to give you that.
I will add, because you might say, well, if it is a problem in the classroom, why doesn't the building just make the decision to tell students that they are not allowed to use them in the classroom? And some of our staff will tell you that right now, it is an incredible battle. And you just need to know that, that we have a lot of patrons who believe their child should have access to their phone all day long, and if they need it to be contacted, that they could pull that out of their pocket, and they could text. And we have, we have a lot of parents that feel that way for safety reasons. And so right now, staff are hesitant to make a change without some form of district policy because there will be concerns about whether or not we should or should not allow students to have them. And we're not proposing that students are not allowed to have a phone in school. What we're suggesting is that they're not necessary during class time.
That was my next question. I think you answered that one, so.
L.C. currently has a policy that allows students to bring their device to school, and it's be kept out of sight all, all throughout the school day or within your locker. And that's their current policy. So no use in the classroom hallways or passing time.
And how's that working there?
So when I asked Deanne, she heard me. She took off. I asked, I asked Deanne if I, if I intentionally came to your school, how often would I see kids on their phones? And she said, it does still happen occasionally, but it is infrequent. And she said, the number of times that students get sent to her office for use of phones is minimal, that it is not, that they have actually believed that the system works and works well at L.C.
Is that something she implemented at the beginning of the year or its semester?
It's been in place now for two, a little over two, for two years. So what they did was L.C. actually started with sixth grade, and then it worked out, and they allowed the seventh and eighth grades, and it worked out well. So then they said, well, let's just carry that into sixth and seventh. And so this has been a transition over, over two and a half years for L.C. So it was not a, just stop doing it. It was a transition. And she would tell you that today, I can say this because she said it to me, that they believe that it is effective and it works.
Inconsistency is the main, the main word.
It is. And it's the-
Needs to be across the district.
A lot of, she'll tell you that a lot of consistency in the expectation from the classroom teachers, because having one teacher who believes it's okay to have your phones out, to use them, and another one who doesn't, just creates conflict. And so one thing that she does have is a staff that has bought into it and believes it and supports it.
Have we done any research on what other districts are size, comparable size, high schools and so forth are doing? And not that that's going to drive what we do, but I was just curious whether we kind of say, this is not, this is not unusual for schools of, of our size as far as our schools.
I haven't done any research, other than I did when I was researching MSBA. They did reference some work that I think it was Springfield did. And, and they actually went towards allowing devices in the classroom. I didn't get into detail in terms of conditions to do that. But you have some districts that allow it, and some districts that do not allow it. And in, in most cases, it looks more like us, which is, the buildings are, themselves are deciding. And it just depends on if the schools, what the rules are at the school.
Yeah. I mean, I personally agree with Lori, that I think we should decide and then make that across the board, that we don't have different schools doing different policies, personally.
Other thoughts? Scott?
We've heard from principals, have we heard from teachers? I mean, I, I gotta believe teachers are going to support this, but-
I ask the, this is more of a secondary issue than elementary. And I asked, I was at the secondary business meeting this past week, and I asked the secondary principals. The first one to speak was Bob James, our high school. And he said that he can safely say that 90% of his teachers would support a policy to help him in this. Obviously, Deanne feels as though she has what she needs. T.J. was kind of neutral. They, right now, in their handbook, it states that cell phones are not allowed to be used in the classroom, but they're allowed in passing and cafeteria time.
And I think some staff carried that out maybe more than others.
They do. Simonson doesn't believe that right now it is an issue, that they believe their staff manage it well. So it just depends on the principal that you speak, speak with.
I think at T.J., from a parent perspective, it is an issue. And we just recently got a letter and an email sent home about the use of technology in the classroom. So I think that they voiced an opinion that it's an issue there. I know I have close friends that teach at the high school, and they have strict policies in their classroom about, about no technology. And they're consistent with it, and it works. And they've got kids' attention and consistency, for sure.
Well, as we look to open Capital City High School, I would also hope that we wouldn't have any inconsistency between Jefferson City High School and Capital City.
Absolutely.
So another opportunity, you know, for that to be consistent across, across the district.
Agreed.
It, it takes some of the heat off of the staff as well, because you may have some teachers that feel very comfortable, I would think, that, you know, hey, if there's a cellphone that comes out or a piece of technology, they can address that, and it's, it's not really an issue. You may have other staff that, you may have other teachers that aren't as comfortable doing that, or they may have, you know, they may just have some difficult issues with a particular class they're working with. And so it may be, it may be more of an issue for them. And so that, again, going back to the consistency ethic we're talking about, that if you, whatever the decision is, if you apply it across the board, then it, it takes some of that, some of that issue away, because then it's, hopefully is very clear. And I think another piece of this is just, is just making sure that it's implemented consistently, that, you know, those of us that have kids in the district, they don't tell you that, I don't think there's, there's, Alan said a short job, but there's a number of times that kids, you know, they may take their, their cell phones in. And I certainly can't do this, but, you know, there've been reports of kids being able to actually text underneath their seats, you know, without actually looking at their keyboards. But to me, it's, it's passing something I'm able to do. But it's, it's, you know, kids are going to be kids, and if they want to get on their phones, then they're going to try to find a way to do that. And so whatever the, the decision is, I think it's got to be clear, and it's got to be consistently implemented and enforced.
So I-
I'm just, I'm curious. I'm certainly all for improving the learning environment, for sure. Is this something that we can go out and survey the community, ask our teachers, ask our, you know, just like we've done on several different things, ask our parents what their opinions are, one way or another? I mean, it would be nice to get some, some feedback across the board, just like we do with everything else.
Good. I, I'm not opposed to, to supporting something like that. My, the only, the counterpoint to that, I would think, would be is that, you know, I, I think Lorla summed it up. I think most of the staff that would say, you know, hey, you know what, this is an issue, and we need, and we need to have it addressed. And so, yeah, I think the, the public charges us with making those decisions in terms of, of the guidance we give Dr. Olympic and his team about, you know, how are you going to improve the academic environment? How are you going to make sure that the district is moving towards that premier status that you mentioned a lot of times? And so I, I just, I wonder how, what kind of a mixed baggy we'd get if we did that.
Well, it'll be a proposed, it'll be a proposed policy, and it'll be on the agenda, and people are welcome to come here, and they can come to your policy committee and give comment. They can come here and give comment, and-
Yeah, I certainly-
They'll have coffee with Larry and, and give comment, and you know-
That would be my thought, because we give them an opportunity to do it, just like we have with the-
We would ask you to move forward with making sure that we have consensus among our administrators and our faculty and staff, that is, it is a thing that we should do. And hearing, I mean, we, we're hearing you say that you've got some consensus from what you've inquired, but I don't know that, I mean, I'd like to have a more formal, I guess, survey of our faculty and our staff and our administrators to say, this is clearly a position that they are taking, that it will help the learning environment.
And I might just interject. Our faculty council that we do once a month, we have representatives from each of our buildings, and they unanimously said, and they represent their staff in each of their buildings, and they have conversations. And Brenda does a great job getting them the information beforehand, and they talk to their folks that they support cellphone changes. And one of the L.C. teachers say that it's working. And so that will be a part of this conversation moving forward.
So if it's, if you're okay, I will begin the process of collecting more information, and then work with administration to craft some kind of language for either policy or administrative procedures. And depending on which those are, take them then to the policy committee for review.
And we've got a policy committee meeting coming up in a few weeks, Dylan.
Let's just make sure that everybody knows it's not going to happen this year. This is going to be something that starts next year, so the public doesn't-
Yes.
Take what you're saying tonight, read it in the paper, and think, next week, the phones are-
No, no expectations for any changes.
Cut that out right here.
You get that, fella?
No.
Thank you for your direction.
Excellent point. Good report. Next report from the chief operations and financial officer, Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening. I'm excited to come with good news. The construction project, just give you a little update on the construction project. Both projects are going great. But the good news that that's come about has happened in the, in the budget area. We have almost $8 million of our, of our bond money is set aside and earmarked for furniture, fixtures, and equipment to furnish both buildings. We obviously have to equip all sports teams and, and everything at a new high school. So there was just under $8 million. And we put out our bids for the furniture for both high schools. And they came back in early February. They were evaluated a couple weeks ago, and happy to say that that came in significantly. That portion, it's not the full, we're still buying other stuff. This is just the furniture portion. But it came in significantly under budget. So we were able to reduce that portion of our budget by $725,000. And so that money is now available to be pushed on to other parts of the project. At the same time, our decision to do construction manager at risk is proving out to be the right decision again. So if we would, if you think about doing a traditional design bid build, which was one of the options we considered, a general contractor goes out to subcontractors, they get hard bids, and then they have to figure, they have to apply allowances and say, I know this is what they say it's going to cost, but I know that we might have to, if we're doing masonry, we might have to tint and heat some. And we have to, we have to make sure that we provide that for them. So there, there are the hard costs that are bid by subcontractors, and then there are allowances. And then that is what makes up our GMP, our guaranteed maximum price. And if we were in design bid build, if they didn't use all those allowances, the general contractor just keeps that money. With construction management at risk, if those allowances aren't used, that money comes back to us. And so we're still, we're still in winter. We still have allowances that are necessary. But NavHOLs has come to us, and they feel like they can release $750,000 of allowances that we have put into, that are built into our guaranteed maximum price. They're not going to need that. So that flows into our contingency piece. So what, what that's done is it has allowed us to, to add in things to the scope of our project that, that are needed, but we weren't able to afford prior. And so some of the things that, that we're, we're looking to move forward on, there were two areas of roofing at Jefferson City High School that are in need of repair, but we could have put them off a little bit. So now we're going to replace the roofs at those two sections. We're going to expand the tennis courts at Capital City High School from four courts to eight courts. We currently play at Washington Park. It is not ideal. It's our only spot, really, to play. And we're being told by our coaches that four courts, you really can't even have a practice on four courts. So we're going to have a place, by doing that, that allows us a place for Capital City to practice. We will also be able to light the Capital City tennis courts, which I think is important, that we really need a place. If this is going to be our home, we can light that. And then we can also add a viewing pavilion for us to actually host tennis events at Capital City High School. And we can actually host for Jefferson City and Capital City at Capital City, instead of having to have our events at Washington Park. We'll also be allowed to light our Capital City baseball and softball practice fields. This, this will allow us, if we have rain, that both schools could practice there. Currently, if it's raining, they can't get on Vivian at Jefferson City High School. They could both practice at Capital City and have a lighted, turfed field. Also, if, if one of the schools is playing a game at Vivian, the other school is going to be practicing at Capital City. So that's going to be used quite often. So much improved usage. And then also lighting the Capital City High School soccer field. So all, this will allow us to light all of the practice fields. There's still going to be practice fields, but it gets us to where we can really use them and, and get our students what they need. So it's, and within that, we still have $900,000 of contingency that we still control. And I, and talking to NavHOLs, you know, the winter hasn't been great, but they still feel that, you know, unless something big happens, we may see some more allowances coming our way. So feel really good about where we are with the budget. Construction is still at worst on time. I'd like to say we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So really excited about what's happening in our construction projects.
Great.
Good news.
Yeah, really good.
Glad to get those people out of those Washington Park tennis courts.
Yes.
Really glad.
Right. I think that'll be a nice, good hook.
Anything else for me?
Good report.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Third time's a charm.
Last report, Dr. Olympic.
Yes. Would like to recognize with some artwork in here on the far wall from East Elementary, and behind me, a Pioneer Trail. It's always great to see our student work. At the end of the day, it's why we do what we do for our students. So it's always great to see that on display. Don will be giving, hi, Don, I see Don, later here, an update on just our APR, the progress that we've shown as a district. And again, that's our staff, our folks, everybody rowing in the same direction. So I look forward to hearing that from Don. I drove bus 11 last Thursday, and I've driven three times. As far as bus routes, I've scheduled to drive bus number 22 here at East Elementary, here on the 5th, I believe, of March. So that's been an eye-opening experience for me, and we appreciate our drivers and, and what they do. And we need to thank our drivers. If you haven't thanked a bus driver lately, you need to. Can we get better? Absolutely. And trying to recognize those areas and how we can get better to provide safe, reliable transportation for our students. So it's been a good experience for, for me with that, as we look to improve our processes and develop our drivers in our partnership with First Student. Last thing is, and we'll touch on here a little bit, just our partnerships, the, the start times, that we'll touch on here a little bit, with our town halls. We had two of those. We've had multiple discussions, coffees, radio, just giving folks opportunities to gather feedback and the individual meetings with folks. So looking forward to move forward with that. And as Jason, the on time and under budget, those are four magic words with regards to J.C. and Capital City. So kudos to Jason, as he oversees that. Dale's here, who's overseeing Capital City High School with the NavHOLs. So thank you, Dale, for being here. So we're moving forward with that, and it's great to see the progress. So thanks, everybody. It's been a part of that. So that's all I got.
Thanks for that. Before, any questions for the ladies? Okay, moving on to future dates. We'll lay every one of those to you, but you see you've got a couple of, lots of important dates coming up, actually. Spring break, everybody's favorite, March 25th through 29th. Everybody gets happy when they see that on the calendar. And already some end-of-year activities scheduled there towards the end of your list. And just a quick plug for Coffee with Larry, that you see that's scheduled for Friday, April 5th. You've got one in March coming up.
We do this Friday. Just want to let folks know there's one in April also, but there is one this Friday, which is March 1st.
If you've, you start at 7:00?
It is 7:00 o'clock. And it's a come and go. And we even have decaf coffee, right, Frank?
Right.
Absolutely. So we have decaf and regular, and we have some foo-foo things you can add to them if you like that. I want to invite folks to come see us.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Frank is a, a regular attendee, and we appreciate that. And if you haven't gotten an opportunity to stop by, even if it's just, you know, after dropping the kids off at school, or before you make your way into the office, it's a really neat opportunity. I really encourage the community to come out and take advantage of getting an opportunity to listen to those points that Larry and the staff get to make. It's also, it's a small venue. You get to speak directly to the district leaders, as well as Dr. Olympic. Every once in a while, you may even see a board member there. You may not want to be there because we're there, I don't know. But it's a good opportunity to come and speak directly with the, the school district leader. So I encourage you to take advantage of that. Moving on to old business, approved agenda, second read of MSBA policy committee recommendations, boundary lines, IGB and IGBH.
So we had first read of two recommendations, two MSBA policy recommendations. IGB were related to accommodation of students with disabilities. We brought that in January for first read, and we bring it tonight for a second read with a recommendation by the policy committee to approve that policy.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorla.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
I would like to add a comment, though, on the boundary line policy. I just had a patron concerned that we were going to change the boundary lines every three years. And what I would like to reiterate is we're going to look at it every three years, and told this patron that it was really with the intention of tweaking our boundary lines, not overall sweeping every boundary line every three years. So I want to be clear that we're at least just going to gather information every three years and make the necessary, if there are any necessary changes to be made.
Yeah, the only one we're voting on now is IGB. And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a, an overview of the boundary line policy.
Okay.
So we're just hacking on, yeah, we're just hacking on the accommodation of students with disabilities first.
Okay.
So. Do you have a motion in a second on the floor? Any other points of discussion?
All right. And then IGBH, which is programs for English learners. Again, brought for a first read in January.
Let me stop you. Let me take these one at a time.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Means there was a motion in a second. Are we going to vote?
Yeah. So all in favor of approving IGB, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Very good. Go ahead, please.
Thanks just to get through with these. IGBH, program for English learners. Again, we brought that for first read in January. So coming back for a second read with the recommendation by the policy committee to adopt.
So moves? Second.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Lori. Lots of discussion there. You just reiterated, I'm sure. Don't hear any other points of discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Very good.
And then for the policy, the attendance area policy, you're exactly right, Lorla. We did include a number of different guidelines, but it does only recommend that, I mean, it mandates review every three years, but also then has some indicators related to- mandates review every three years, but also then has some indicators related to demographics and enrollment that would prompt a review. In the policy, there is no mandated change in any policy, in any attendance boundary. It's simply an action that would ask the board to review it, to consider all the different information and make sure that it happens on a regular basis. So that certainly addresses your concern that you're...
I would move to approve that policy.
Thank you, Lorale.
Second.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any additional discussion, discussion points? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good, policy is adopted. Thanks for your work on that, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Moving on to new business, JCPS Foundation update from Mrs. Karen Enlow. And Mrs. Morgan Mortehausen.
Thanks for having us. Dr. Lithicum and Board of Education, we're really excited to share with you our report this year. We're calling it the Year of the Anonymous Gift in my line of work. Sometimes you'll get one in your whole career. This year, we have four for just this year, so we're really excited to share the information with you. Morgan is standing here with me. She has been the Associate Director for 18 months with the foundation. I'm beginning my 13th year with the foundation and we work hand in hand in solving problems and talking to donors and being able to see some really great things carried out in our work. We have an executive committee. Steve Brenneman is our president, Holly Scher, our treasurer, and Erica Leonard, our secretary. Normally, our executive committee serves two years, maybe sometimes three, but kind of an average of two. And both of the, all three of these have served at least two years at the end of the year. We have a great board. Most of you will know, probably everybody on that picture, we have 16-member volunteer board. These people are very engaged in our schools. They're very concerned about our schools and that things moving forward for our schools and they're just real advocates and people that you could drop on if you needed to.
Okay, every year, we have the opportunity to work with the Jefferson City High School Counseling Department and we're also looking forward to adding Capital City High School to this as well. But we get the opportunity to work with them and have had the opportunity over the past several years in developing common scholarship opportunities for our students that are graduating. In fact, here you will see 2018, we recognized 45 mayor scholarship recipients. That's just one scholarship that we received. It's a very significant scholarship, $8,000 over four years. So as you can see, it's a pretty, pretty large group of kids that we could, we are able to give this to. We gave 83 recipients, a number of 69 scholarships, which totaled over $400,000 that you guys can see there. This year in 2019, we're proud to say that we're offering 71 common scholarships. Some that are, or most of them are ones that we've given in the past. We do have a couple new ones that I'll touch on here shortly, but we are going to offer these again at our 32nd Annual Scholarship Luncheon on April 7th at Capital Plaza. So three new scholarships that we are offering this year. The first one is the Erin Shirey Blais Scholarship. It is a $1,500 scholarship awarded to a graduating senior pursuing a degree in nursing. The recipient must show financial need through our common scholarship application process with an overall minimum GPA of 2.5 or higher. The Stanley M. and Helen B. Bradley Scholarship, this amount, or I'm sorry, this scholarship was established or is established through a financial trust, so the amount given each year will vary. It's dispersed by a central bank and it's awarded to a student in the top one-third of their class, planning to pursue full-time studies at a college, university or vocational tech school. Lastly, the KAI Scholarship. This was actually established last year, however, this is the first year we will be able to give it to a student due to it being established through a trust as well. We are able to disperse that through the foundation and it's awarded to a student accepted into a tech school. And higher consideration is given to a student that possesses good moral character, has been volunteering within the community or employed part-time. And as you'll read there, we received an additional $60,000 for this scholarship in December to be able to give towards student, furthering their education. Next, this brings us to our first set of anonymous gifts. These two scholarships are set up to support our adult education and literacy students, so our AEL students. That first scholarship, you'll see there's a $5,000 scholarship, $1,000 per year. It will assist for payment of subtest or retest of the state authorized equivalency test or GED test. The cost of the five subtests alone are about $100 and that covers all five. So the eligibility for the student, they, they would have to serve at the Jeff City Adult Basic Education Center, is in financial need and attended at least 12 hours and successfully passed the practice test to be able to obtain funding for the subtest and the pretest, or retest, excuse me. The second scholarship there is another $5,000 scholarship, the Success Scholarship, $1,000 for five years. This, we had the opportunity to work with the AEL Coordinator, Stephanie Schler, and so Assistant Director Ron Jewell in establishing an application process of which they will be able to determine who receives a scholarship ultimately, but they have an application for students to fill out and apply for this. The eligibility would be, they served at the Jeff City Adult Basic Education Location, has received the high school equivalency certificate and will be successful in their post-secondary endeavors. The recipient of this scholarship will be recognized at the AEL recognition ceremony in May.
We talk about a lot about recognition of different people. Of course, the very first recognition we love to talk about is our Railton Professionals. These, these are 10 teachers who are fairly new to the job, but they're really rock stars and they're really people that we are counting on to carry us through and help others, younger teachers that come along. And so each year at the opening session, we award 10 Railton awards to our new teachers. And they have had to have been in the district a couple, three years in working, but it's really gratifying to see those names come in. We work for the Secondary Education Office here in the building to help us with those nominations and select the people. We do not select them, we know, we feel that others know these teachers better than we do. We're just happy to hand them the money for the, for the award. So these are 10 Railton new professional teachers. Also, our gala, we recognize a lot of people at our gala this year was Daring to Dream. We've been daring to dream for a long time. When you look back about the number of decades, we've been waiting for a second high school. That kind of just dovetailed with the 20 years of the foundation work and so that was something to talk about in the dream and we really enjoyed using that theme this year. We have our Hall of Leaders that we've inducted in this very room. Brenda Hatfield was inducted as Outstanding Volunteer and Stephanie Johnson as our distinguished alumni. And then this year, we had another significant donor and that was the Morris family, Patty Morris and her family. And they were our first legacy donor. And so that is something about, that's over $100,000 that they've given and so we're really happy to have that second designation and our first legacy donor. Gala planning is always a lot of fun. By the time you, you finish with the gala, you're starting to plan and think, what are we going to do next year? I've been looking at already. But I just want you to know that we, as a group, we set goals, we set attendance goals, we set definitely financial goals because we think it's really important to have partnerships and, and to use those partnerships to further our mission with the district. And so our goal this last year was $45,000 and I'm happy to report that we brought in So our third anonymous gift, this came about as a need. Two years ago, when the high school a cappella group sang for our gala, the sound system in Capital Plaza, excuse me, was terrible. And I really was burdened by the great effort that the kids were giving and, and their beautiful sound in such poor equipment. And so after talking to Capital Plaza, they were not interested in updating their sound equipment. So we took things in our own hands and we started to share the need. And so I'm just so happy to have a donor who loves our kids, loves what they're doing and stepped forward to give us partial payment of the sound equipment. We also combined that with a foundation grant and then talked with Bob James. And between the three of us, we all made it happen. They have wireless mics and they came back and sang for this, this year and it was just phenomenal. They did such a great job. And I got to hear them the other day and their, their music is so beautiful. So I'm just so happy to be able to see something that we really needed and to see that come through. But it's only because of another anonymous gift that we received this year.
Okay, so Karen and I are going to talk about some collaborative efforts that have been made. Our first one, Giving Tuesday. This is a newer trend that falls on the Tuesday following Black Friday, Small Business Saturday and Cyber Monday. So we're asking people to give whatever they may have left at that point back to the jury. But this was something that our board had proposed. We were looking for new ways to fundraise to be able to support our teacher grants further and they came up with a holiday drive, which we ran from November 27th through January 7th. And the idea of Giving Tuesday was actually passed along to me by a fellow coworker and we decided to use this platform as kind of a springboard for our holiday drive. This was the first year that we've done this. It was a social media campaign that took place primarily through Facebook. The reason we utilized Facebook, because we had a possible match opportunity, Facebook and PayPal were giving back up to $7 million to nonprofit organizations through this campaign. Unfortunately, we weren't one of those nonprofits that were selected for the match.
Next year, we will be next year.
But we were successful in our eyes. We raised a total of $765 to go back towards our teacher grant program, just in one day. We just used a ton of advertising for Giving Tuesday specifically and those funds were just raised within one day's time. So we're proud to report that we had a successful year with that.
The best thing is just being able to give that extra money out to our teachers. We look forward to doing that every year. Another thing we really love too is getting people that are out in our community and our faith-based churches connected with our schools. And Mission JC began in 2013. Roger Hatfield is here, but his daughter actually was one that helped our church, our Presbyterian church, bring that, that forward. And now they have eight, nine churches working together. We have groups of people that we're working side by side with in our schools, but we might not even know who they are. So that's, we get to meet new friends, but also we have an advocate, new advocates for our schools. There are seven schools, eight schools right now that are participating in Mission JC last year and this year. And those projects might include cleaning, landscaping, painting, small construction projects, a little bit larger construction projects. But the one thing I really love, our volunteers are writing thank you notes to our teacher and encouraging notes to let them know that we really do appreciate the work they're doing and just to give them that little atta boy, atta girl stretch to get in through May until they finish their classes. And so again, it's a great effort by our community. It's kind of like Serve JC, but it's, it's through our faith-based organizations and it's really a blessing to see how many people sign up for these projects and we have them in our, in our schools. Anonymous gift number four, and this was supporting a special needs classroom at More Heights. We did this last fall and many of you were there to help us honor Cindy Conley and her teachers and they, she works with the very severe, profound kids, many of them are non-verbal. And it, it takes an effort every day. And, and she has such innovative ideas because she did not have a larger budget. She just would come up with something like, they had, she, they had a child who would not, kept picking up a chair and throwing it down. She just duct taped the whole chair to the floor and doing so many things, just with no, no resources. But she received a $10,000 gift and that gift is kind of a three-part gift. The second part, the foundation, we're trying to raise the second part of that. And then we've already talked about with another party, a third part of that gift. So you'll be seeing more come along about this anonymous gift and how it will spread and, and continue to help the special needs kids that we have in this classroom, in her classroom. One thing I want to just really touch on is writing grants. United Way, we were happy to partner with, be one of United Ways. Yep. We, we were happy to be one of the United Way Community Grant recipients. It was a very hot day that, that day, you can remember Dr. Lithicum, we were standing there, but the joy of having money come to our district was wonderful. We worked with Bridget and her, her office about giving audiometers to our schools that are in need. And this specifically was a need at, at Southwest. We have a lot of kids that get screened all the time for hearing problems. And they needed a higher tech, more expensive, if you want to say that, higher quality audiometer. And so we were able to get this audiometer and, and buy a couple more. And so we're really happy to partner with the needs that were in our schools. But we want to thank United Way for their community grant. So not only do we write grants, we give grants this year Friday, Friday? We're going to go out on our prize patrol and give out $15,844.64 to seven buildings. We'll be going to Calway South, Pioneer Trail West, Wilson Clark East and Simonson. And we're going to finish up at Simonson, but they actually have three grants that they've written for. And these grants that leave okay, they will take the equipment or whatever they ask for with them to Capital City. So Capital City kind of has a new boost going forward.
Okay, moving into supporting children and families within our district. For the last eight years, we've had the joy of celebrating Santa Day at Southwest Early Childhood Center, which I believe most of you are familiar with. George and Galene Owlesley very generously give their time and resources to this day. And over the past eight years, we've served over 2,200 children just at Southwest. This is a day that has, that gives kids the opportunity to meet Mr. and Mrs. Claus, sing Christmas carols with friends. Dr. Lithicum, I think you can take that one from that mistake.
With his crazy hat. With his crazy hat.
Hooky decorating.
You have a picture of that?
I think there's one somewhere. We didn't put it up in the slide, but we did that. It's just a really fun day for these kids to have the opportunity in celebrating Christmas because some of, some of our families aren't fortunate enough to be able to have that. So along with the partnership, George and Galene provide, you know, it takes many volunteers for this day to go off without a hitch. In addition to community partnerships such as Scholastic providing books, just a single Christmas book for these kids to take home. George and Galene do a very great job of making sure that the kids have some form of small gift that they can take home as well. There's also a lady within a retirement home who crochets hats. I mean, hundreds of hats for these kids.
In that basket.
Yeah, they're right there in that basket. Mrs. Claus so very much enjoys just fitting hats for these children all day long. So again, without the support of community members and donors such as George and Galene, I mean, this day wouldn't even happen. For the past two years, the foundation board has worked with Jeff City Public School social workers to adopt a family for... social workers to adopt a family for Christmas. These are personal donations along with time and other resources that are given by board members to provide a family in need with wonderful Christmas gifts. And what you see there is a complete list that we were able to provide for a family this year through our personal efforts. This spring, you guys may have noticed it being promoted already, we'll hold our annual Papa and Princess dances at our Lewis and Clark and Thomas Jefferson buildings. These dances are for kindergarten through fifth grade. Young ladies to attend with their papas or special person in their life. It's just an afternoon filled with dancing and fun and crafts, and they have the opportunity to have a picture taken and take home with them. We are launching a new feature this year of our online registration through MidMOTX that we've seen success with so far. That's at no expense to us, so it's a free tool for us to utilize. And again, so far, we've seen really good success. This is an event that requires a ton of volunteers on hand as well. I mean, again, without the help of our community, we wouldn't be able to make this day possible. Last year, you'll see there, and just in the two dances, we raised over $15,000 to go back towards various needs.
There's no greater joy in our work than to work with donors and for people to have ideas and then over some time, give resources towards making that dream fulfilled. The Icinger Teacher of the Year, I can't tell you what joy they bring every time they come into the office. They're amazing people. They have a lot to be grateful for health-wise, but they're just great, great people. And so this is the fourth year of the 15-year donation. However, they've already fully funded the gift that they set out to give. And not only is it just wonderful and a wonderful story for them to continue to come back and to see who is the Teacher of the Year and the Outstanding Educator, it's wonderful for them to see Scholastic partner with us and our three local banks partner with us with the Monetary Award. So it's just a group effort. But I would have to say, Icingers are just fantastic people and it's just a joy to be able to work with them. We're getting ready to launch Teacher of the Year Committee tomorrow. Dan Renfro from Hawthorne Bank, Paula Vanant, Capital Region, Russ Bell, Jefferson Bank, Missy Creed, Dogwood Social, Pam Hendrickson, Central Trust Investments. Glenn Ahonig is representing the Alumni Association. She's also a retired educator. And then Ade Pius, and she was with the PTA/PTO group. So we're really excited. We have Dan and Paula coming back for the second year. This is usually a two-year term. And so we're really excited to get started with that tomorrow. We talked about the John A. Morris family, Patty Morris and her family. This happened at the end of last school year, but we talked about this legacy donor, what this means and how are we going to display this. And it's because of the students through Nichols Career Center, three different classes that made this actual plaque possible. They worked with Morgan and I and John Moon, and I just thought it was a beautiful rendition of young kids learning to read. You'll see them under the tree reading. It's got the donor's name on it, but also just the reason why it's there. And so this is displayed outside a classroom at Southwest. And we hope to add other plaques in the future of anybody that would be interested in giving a gift to Southwest. The newest endowment that we were able to announce last Thursday was the David Goller Endowment for $636,000. The auditorium is being named after him. I got a very short text from his son saying, "Love the article. Thank you so much." And so just really happy to have slight conversations with David's son Greg. And, but what a wonderful gift he gave to the foundation to make sure the Miller Center is there, you know, just prospering and helping students learn about theater and etiquette. And just really, what a wonderful gift that he did give. I thought it would be interesting for you all to see the financial growth over the last 12, 13 years. Now, we started on 2007. We were not at zero, but I didn't have that exact number. I'm thinking maybe 200,000. Would that be close? 250, maybe? Somewhere in that.
Somewhere in that range.
Somewhere in that range. But anyway, I just thought you might see and understand that it's, you know, it hasn't been a big spike until this last year, but it's just taken growth a little bit at a time as we inched up to be where we want to be. And of course, we'd love to be farther than 2, 2 million. We would hope to see that number still continue. But just people learning about the foundation, understanding the work that they're doing to help our teachers and help our district be better and stronger together. And so I thought you might enjoy seeing that graph. Actually, it was kind of fun to watch it eke up there. The other thing, too, is the financial impact. I asked Morgan to pull the money that we gave back to the district since February 2018. And that number, and it surprised me, but that number was $250,035. So we want you to know that's from grants, Southwest, scholarships, awards, all kinds of different things that we've given back this last year. So that's our report. We hope you, it has been informative. And if there's any questions, we'll take a minute. If not, we appreciate you having us every year.
Karen?
I don't have a question, but Karen, I have some comments. First of all, thank you for staying with the choral theme tonight.
I know.
Appreciate you.
I was going there, Laurel.
Appreciate you.
I was on the committee that hired Karen 13 years ago. And she is right. We were completely volunteer-run and we hired Karen. You have cultivated so many relationships for the foundation, which resulted solely
due to you, to this scholar donation. And you know that, and I know you won't admit it, but, but you did, and we appreciate it. And you've worked really hard to grow this foundation. And I just wanted to recognize you as a difference maker and say thank you.
Thank you.
Ken doesn't get any.
He needs to stand up.
I just want to echo what Laurel I said. Karen, your inspiration, I enjoyed my time as I worked on that board for a couple of years. But for the public, the two events that they mentioned that involve the children, the Princess and Papa Dance, the two of them, and then also Santa Day at Southwest. If you have not experienced and you have some time to volunteer, I urge you all to, it's, you will walk away feeling the fuzziest you've ever felt in your life. So if you've got some time, these ladies sure could use some help at those events.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you, Beth.
Next couple of agenda items belong to Mr. Frank Underwood.
All right, what I have is, I guess, two proposals. I'll just do them separately. Lewis and Clark, they're pretty much identical. It's for the intercom system and the bell system at Lewis and Clark. And Thomas Jefferson are each 25 years old, failing, one of them miserably. And so what this, through Tech Electronics, what they'll do is come in and install a new intercom system and bell system, as well as GPS clocks that will, they run off battery, but they work through GPS, so they keep synchronized time at all times. So Lewis and Clark, first, for the clocks and the bell system, Tech Electronics come in and replace that and just update it. I don't know if you all have been out to Lewis and Clark. TJ saw their intercom box. It is, I remember that look from 1970s. But anyway, so for the, for the total of the replacement at Lewis and Clark, 47, 119. I bring this to you for any questions and submit to you for approval.
For our motion.
So move.
Thank you, Laurel.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Frank? Discussion points?
Did we do competitive bidding process for this?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, and Tech Electronics is, I want to say that they're sole, I mean, kind of a one-off as far as what they provide and what they have. We could not get bids from anybody else that we went to. I can get you, I don't have them in front of me, but I can get you to the other people that we did get. Tried to seek bids from them, but they just, they didn't come and look at it. They didn't even offer to bid on it.
Okay. I just had one of the questions. I noticed that the proposal, the soft copy that we have isn't signed by Tech Electronics. Do we have a hard copy that does have their signature on it?
Lucy gave it to me after I had sent that out.
Okay.
So I do have a hard copy.
You guys should have a copy of the one that they'd signed.
Actually, Steve has it in his files right there. You should have it signed.
Right here. Lucy's signature now signed.
So this is the, the ones we're replacing are the ones you installed when school was built 2025.
Correct. The original.
Yeah.
93. It's signed. Steve.
Okay, great. That's the only question.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor of approving the Tech Electronics contract for Lewis and Clark? Say aye. And opposed, say nay. Contract approved.
Okay. Similar contract for Thomas Jefferson. It is a thousand, almost $1,100 higher. There is wiring that needs to be, it's mainly labor and wiring that they need to do in some classrooms that I guess are in addition to what they had at Lewis and Clark. But identical work, identical equipment, hopefully we don't have identical problems at the same time getting the duplicates like that. But for this proposal, it's $48,205 to replace the intercom systems and GPS clocks throughout the building. Submit this to you for approval.
So move. So move. Thank you, Ken.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Did hear you, right? Very good. Discussion on that? All in favor of approving the contract for Tech Electronics for Thomas Jefferson? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Good, that contract approved. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Coming on down the agenda, APR update from Ms. Dawn Bearhorst.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am going to pass these out. Or take one and pass it? Okay, so I know you all have heard the good news about our APR, but I wanted to, I know we've got some new board members, and we only talk about this once a year, so I wanted to give some kind of details and some high-level information. We will go a little bit into some details, but if you want more information, I'd be happy to meet with you individually. I'm trying to keep this at a, down. That would help. Okay, so what is the APR? The APR stands for Annual Performance Report. And it measures the Missouri School Improvement Program, or MSIP, performance standards. So DESI has the Missouri School Improvement Program, and there are three criteria: performance standards, resource standards, and process standards. And the APR is the tool that measures the performance standards. And that is what determines our accreditation. So if you have a 70% or above on your APR, you are accredited. And then provisionally accredited is 50 to 69, and unaccredited is less than 50. As you know, this chart that Ryan put together shows the, the last four years of Jefferson City Public Schools' APR. We've had three years of consecutive improvement. When you look at other districts across the state, we are in the top 10% in terms of the increase that districts have seen from 2015 to 2018. So I think that's really exciting and something that we really need to celebrate. We're not where we want to be, but we are, we have some momentum going and we're showing growth, so that's important. And as you'll see later, we're really showing some growth in English Language Arts and Math. So the APR has five different indicators. So the categories up there in red are the indicators. So you've got academic achievement, which typically includes social studies, but in 2018, we were field testing. So in 2018, that included English Language Arts, Math, and Social Studies. Subgroup achievement, which measures those same three content areas. College and career readiness, which has three different areas. So it looks at the kind of the college prep tests or college and career prep tests, like the ACT, SAT, compass, work keys, Accuplacer, and then the military readiness ASVAB. It's an aptitude test, so that's one standard that it looks at. Then the next standard is kind of those coursework within the school day programs, like Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, Project Lead the Way. For Career and Tech Ed, they look at industry-recognized credentials, so how they perform on some of those industry-recognized assessments and how students fare on those based on their career ed training. And then dual enrollment and dual credit. And then they also look at post-secondary follow-up. So 180 days post-graduation, what are kids doing? Did we prepare them to be contributing citizens? And so that's another indicator under college and career readiness. Attendance and then graduation rate. So those are the five areas. So this slide is pretty colorful. Sorry. But I wanted just to look at this. So those are the five indicators. Each group shows the five indicators. 2015 is blue, 16 is yellow, 17 is red, and 18 is green. So you can see our progress particularly in academic achievement and subgroup achievement. College and career ready has been on a increase. We were flat compared to last year, but over the last several years, we've been improving. Attendance has just remained flat across all four years. And I'll get to graduation rate. We're going to talk about this in, in some future slides. While our graduation rate, the percent of points earned, has decreased substantially, our graduation rate has not. It is actually the same as it was last year. It's the way the tool evaluates it. So I need to, I just want, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but it's not as alarming as that first slide kind of indicates. So if you are looking at your white, the white piece of paper in front of you, or we can look, look ahead, I just kind of want to give you this as a reference. This should be on page two of your white handout there, or paper on white, or handout on white paper. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the different details within each of those standards. So you see the MSIP standards that we talked about, academic achievement, subgroup achievement, and so, so forth. But then you see the content areas and how we earn the, the content areas underneath that. So you'll see English Language Arts, Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies. And then if you look to the far right, you'll see the percent of points earned in each of those areas. So I think this is important for us to look at because while the numbers on the four-year trend look great, I think this is even more exciting. When we think about our literacy efforts and we are earning 100% of the points possible in English Language Arts, I think that that shows that the hard work that is being put in by our administrators, our teachers, our instructional coaches, that's starting to pay off. And I think that that is exciting news. Math is much better than previous years. It's not as high as English Language Arts. But I do want to point out that this is 17, 18 data. So this is the assessment from the 17, 18 school year. That would have been our first year with a math resource. So I think that the increases in math achievement are indicative of having a resource, for one thing. But I think that as our teachers, as we've gone about rounding, we, I at least have been hearing how they're getting far more comfortable with the Go Math and they're just more comfortable with the tool. So hopefully we'll continue to see those improvements as well. Social studies, just, so you're aware, that is based on high school government only. Social studies, just, so you're aware, that is based on high school government only. So there is no elementary or middle school social studies assessment. The other thing that I want to point out on this same piece of paper that you have in front of you, because I think this is another highlight that we need to talk about, is the kind of the middle columns there. So you'll see up on the slide, I've kind of highlighted with a red box where it says points from prior year, then 2018 actual points earned, and 2018 adjusted points earned. The reason I think this is important is the state, because math and ELA was a, were new assessments this year, in the 17-18 school year, the state put in provisions to where if a district didn't do well on the new assessment, there was kind of a, we'll use some, a formula that allows them to use some of the points they earned from the year before to offset the points on, from 2018. But the reason I think this is important for us is you'll note that the points from the prior year in English Language Arts were 15, and math were nine, but our actual points earned in both cases was higher, so we didn't have to use any adjusted points. And again, I just think that's a, that's a, how we earn our points is important in this tool, and so I think that's something that we need to celebrate as well.
So Dawn, let me interrupt real quick. Basically, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly is that that's organic growth, that's not growth that's been adjusted or accounted for changes in between the two years.
Absolutely.
That's real, that's real improvement.
Absolutely. Yes. So had our points been lower, there would have been a formula that would allow the two sets of points to kind of be combined, so it wouldn't have as much of a drop for us, but we didn't need that, so I think that's encouraging. Yeah. Okay, I know I'm asking you to flip-flop through a lot of documents here, but we are provided a lot of documents. If you look at the, kind of the tan-colored document, or if you prefer, you can just look at the screen as well, but I'm not going to go into, this is a very busy document, as you can tell, not going to go into the calculations, but there are some things that I think, some key points that I think we need to have takeaway. Again, if you look on the left-hand side, you're going to see the standard on this one, on this page is academic achievement. I'm going to just kind of model for you how to look at English Language Arts and what some of this means, and then you can apply that to other content areas. But you'll notice that there are status, progress, and growth listed under English Language Arts. So status is just a measure of achievement, it's the level of achievement, how well did you do? So that, you can earn points solely on performance. Progress takes a defined group of students and looks at, or defined group, not students, a defined group, and looks at how they perform over time. So in 2017-18, it's going to look at grades three through eight in English Language Arts and English II. Kids are promoted, so kids transfer out of English II and take English III, we get a new set of third graders, you know, so they promote, and so you're looking at a different set of kids, but it's the same group of assessments. Does that make sense? So that's progress, looking at last year's students who took those grade level assessments to this year's grade level. Growth is individual student gain, so it measures gains from year to year of individual students. So it's saying, you've had these kids for a full year, have you moved them, these individual students' gains? So it's important to know the difference between those. So you can earn points through status and progress, or status and growth, but you can't earn progress and growth both. Does that make sense? So those are both status and progress, or status and growth. So this is what I really want to draw your attention to. So this is the first time we've seen this in years. Jefferson City Public Schools is at the highest level, we've earned 100% of the growth points, and the way that is defined is that 50 is the state mean, okay, just, that is the state average, is, by design is 50. And so they look at our district's performance to see if it is statistically different than the state mean. And if it is, you're awarded the full great, growth points, and you get a designation of exceeding. So there is exceeding, trying to think, floor, and I think the middle one is approaching. So I just think that's exciting, because we are moving individual kids, our teachers are working really hard, our principals are working really hard, this building is working really hard, and they're all working, we're all rowing in the same direction, and it's paying off for individual students. So I think that's an important point on this slide.
Did you say it's the first time in the schools?
Uh, no, it's the first time in several years, I'd have to go back and look, it's, it's a, we have not been, we have not seen a lot of that kind of growth for a while. So, just some quick notes, science was a field test in 2018, so we didn't get any points for science.
Neither did anybody else, right?
Neither did anybody else, yes, that was just completely removed, therefore the denominator was 20 points less than it will be, than previous years. Next year, just so you know, social studies will be a full-scale field test as well, so we'll have fewer points next year as well. It will be different than, than science, because they don't give social studies as much weight as science, but we will, it will be 2020 before we get back on an even keel of the 56 points that we have experienced for points possible in academic achievement. So just kind of know that we're going to be in flux a little bit the next couple of years, that's the moral of that story.
So you could surmise, if you can read, there's probably a better chance that you'll do, a good chance you'd do better on the science and social studies, though, right?
Yes, you would think, yes. Okay, this is just, I just wanted to point out to you, subgroup achievement, so just as a reminder, I don't know that I mentioned this earlier, subgroup achievement, that includes students with disabilities, English language learners, so our ELL students, students whose native language isn't English. It includes students who are free and reduced lunch, and then it includes Black and Hispanic students, so all those are in one group called a super subgroup. So while we are making gains and earning points in subgroup achievement, we are not where, we're not showing the same kinds of gains that we're showing in our academic achievement, all students, with the exception of social studies, which government is apparently rocking it with our super subgroup, because their status is on track and progress is exceeding. Exceeding is the highest level you can get, so not going to go into any detail, but just wanted to show you that. Okay, we already talked about the same song, second verse, subgroup achievement is impacted as well because of science, and will be affected next year because of social studies. College and career readiness. So we talked about the three different measures, one through three, the first one up there is ACT, SAT, ASVAB, Accuplacer, Compass, those assessments, we're doing really well on status, and if you look across, the actual data is across the top, to the right of the red box where it says 67.9, 71%, 67.7, that means that from the state's perspective, we are on track to where we need to be for their 2020 target. However, we're not showing growth there, so that is another, that's an area that we want to be sure to look at. Advanced placement, we are at the highest level possible, that does include dual credit, Project Lead the Way, some of those assessments as well, but we are doing exceptionally well in advanced placement and dual credit as well. We just aren't showing progress again, so that's an area that we need to continue to look at. Post-secondary placement, I think this is exciting, we are on track both in status and progress, but if you look to the far right, you'll see that for 2018, we had 91.5% of our students earning a qualifying score. So what that means is that 91% of our 2017 graduating class either went on to higher education, or they are working in a career that's related to their career education coursework, or they went on to the military. So those are very positive post-secondary outcomes, which ultimately is one of our biggest outcome measures, so I think we're doing exceptionally well there as well. Attendance, we just continue to struggle with attendance, you'll notice that for the third year in a row, we, our attendance rate has gone down, and that is despite a lot of efforts on the part of our buildings. Some of them have done some really creative things to really make kids feel welcome, to have parties when they're there, if they're missing, say, hey, I missed you today, hope everything's okay, hope to see you tomorrow, really reaching out and do that, but we're just struggling, that's, that is something that is not completely within our locus of control, so we continue to work on that, but it is, it's a, it's a family and parent, uh, school issue. And then I want to show you graduation rate real quickly, because I think the one slide there was, at least at first glance, a little concerning, to go from 100% to 95% to 75%.
Well, it remained the same.
Yes, that, so when you, it, the graduation rate returned, remained the same, so we didn't actually have a declining graduation rate, we just, the points earned went down. So if you look up here for the four-year graduation rate, in 2016, we had 85.7% of our students graduating in a four-year timeframe, for, the four-year cohort graduation rate was 84.5, and then in 2018, it was 84.5 as well. So you can see it's exactly the same between 2017 and 2018. But when you look at this, the way progress is evaluated is it takes the average of 2016 and 2017, and compares it to the average of 2017 and 2018. So by having that high year, in that first year there, it raises that prior two-year average higher than our current two-year average, does that make sense?
Yes.
So when that falls off, assuming we either maintain, or if, or if we can increase, we will see that stabilize a little bit, but we did not earn any progress points because we are, the overall trend is not increasing, but I think the important message is we don't have a declining, a huge decline in graduation rate, we are, we are at the same place we were last year, so.
So, just a quick question, so we did have a drop from 16 to 17.
We did.
Did we do any analysis at that time to see if we could identify the reason for that drop?
Mm-hmm, we did.
Okay.
So Mr. Versace and I, I pulled the data, and he worked with his team to really talk through, let's look at these, what are the reasons behind why they're, why they're not, why the graduation rate is decreasing, and I think in most, in every, in most cases, there was a, do you remember the outcome of that conversation?
There's nothing that jumped out Ken, as far as, you know, typical profile, maybe something in the home, or attendance, or work, and, and the overriding thing that we're really pushing hard now is to get all of our kids involved in something school-related, to give them that extra motivation to get to school, to have more adults accountable, to be more accountable to more adults in their life, because I think if you belong to something, and you get that connection, that will help, I think that's probably our lowest hanging fruit. You know, it, it's a struggle, you know, the attendance is related to the graduation rate.
Sure. I was just, yeah, so nothing jumped out as far as a, you know, significant indicator?
The principals combed through those lists to make sure there wasn't something that...
We had seven through 12 administrators and counselors all meet over at the high school, and we have the dropout list with student names, and I wish I had something that I could say, this is it, it's not.
Okay, I was just curious.
So I tried to find a little bit of a blend between the key points, and not going into too much detail, but some of the detail you needed just to kind of understand some of the trends. Is there any, does anyone have any other questions about the APR?
I think that's a first down, and we should go for four more yards.
There we go. Here we go. I know this is, to a lot of folks, it's not exciting to talk about, because it's a lot of numbers, it's a lot of stats, but, you know, the one thing I hope our partners in the media take away from this evening, and hopefully the folks in the community is that, this is, I said it earlier, and you illustrated, this is no growth, and, I mean, it's not adjusted, it's not, you know, artificially inflated, and honestly, I mean, just myself, I was concerned, I was worried about that, just given the changes from one year to the next, that, now, it's, it's a hard enough job that all of you guys have to be able to drive these numbers in a positive direction, and when the state makes changes from year to year to year to year, you can't compare last year from this year, it makes it really difficult to be able to figure out what adjustments you need to make, and how and where, but to me, this is, this is very, very encouraging, and it's indicative of the fact that a lot of the changes that we're making from ground up, and as well top-down, they're having a positive impact for our kids, and that's what we're all, that's what we're all here to do. Good, good work.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Dawn.
Next time with business, Dr. Linscomb, start times and end times.
Start time. Were we going to talk about start times tonight?
Just a little bit.
It's on the agenda. Absolutely. You know, the start times, and Jason could, could touch on, our school district has looked over the last 10 to 12 years of changing start times, and the decision was made not to move forward with that for a variety of reasons. The time, is there ever a right time? Because change is pain, I know that's something that Jason has referenced in our presentations when we go to each of the buildings, that change is pain, and we recognize that, and we don't take that lightly. At the end of the day, what is best for our students? What's going to give us the best chance to become a premier school district, to give all of our students hope for a better tomorrow, ensure that our students can read, to improve our graduation rate and our attendance rate, which are two, if there was anything that didn't give you goosebumps, it was maybe those two things in Dawn's presentation, and so, you know, talking with schools that have made some changes, and what is the impact on this? So those are some things we're going to talk about here, but at the end of the day, what's driving it all is our learning, partnership, and stewardships, and those are our three pillars that we've stuck to, and that we believe in as a school district, that those pillars drive and guide the decisions that we make. So with that, we gathered input, you guys as a board gave us the directive to continue to gather input, we have been in all of our buildings, I believe except South, is that correct? Which is tomorrow, we were scheduled with South, and it's been rescheduled because of a snow day, or late start, or early out, or something, that doggone weather.
We've had one or two.
We've had one or two. So we'll meet with them. Brendon will give us an update on some student focus groups, at the middle school and secondary level, we wanted their lens, our community coffees, the community town halls, I've asked our folks to give us an update on that, from radio call-in that I've had, Steve's had, just to gather community, because we realize it's a significant change, whenever you're talking about changing start times, it's why our local two TV cameras are right there, okay, it's just the reality of it, because, and we take that seriously. The most, I think, to summarize it, and then we'll get into details here, I think most would agree through the stakeholder input from students, staff, parents, that a, most, not all, that a change is needed. Nicole, you hit on some things from a, can we get better with first student and our transportation, whether we change start times or not? Absolutely, and we need to own that, this isn't a silver bullet that's going to fix This isn't a silver bullet that's gonna fix our transportation areas where we can get better. We recognize it. It's not gonna fix all of our student behaviors. It's not gonna fix graduation rates. But can you do things that help move the needle? You know, that dollar sign, as far as the stewardship piece of being a good steward's or patron's money? If you can save, of a net savings of up to a half million a year over 10 years, that's $5 million. And that is significant. So you have to look at this and vet the process. And our folks, I, I think have done that. We're not asking for approval tonight. We are asking, and we'll, we'll get into, of moving forward with regards to having elementaries go first and secondary second. And then with the recommendation at our March Board meeting, what those times are. And I'll, I'll touch on here at the end, but we're gonna ask our community for their input on that. And that's just kind of a, a, a summary of that, of the highlights on that. But I've got some information from Eldon. Eldon is much smaller than us. Eldon, they made the decision last July. They told their folks they were gonna move their start times. They didn't do anything in the spring. They didn't have town halls. In July, they said, "We're gonna move from 8 o'clock to 8:30," elementary and secondary. And they made that change. And as of today, I talked to Matt Davis, the superintendent. Their attendance rate through this time last year was 93.5. This year, it's 96%. They went up 2.5% at the secondary level, went up 1% at the elementary level. They feel their student behaviors are down, their attendance is up. Those are real, those are real stories. Columbia, they made the decision. And I talked to Peter Stiepleman, and their change for when they did that. And Jason, can you help me on the, the first year that they did that?
When they opened Battle.
When they opened Battle High School. And I don't know the exact year of that was.
13, 14.
14?
14.
13, 14. And they, he shared with me a significant, that their graduation, graduation rates went up significantly. Student behaviors, behaviors went down as far as OSS and ISS. And they're starting at 8:50 to 4 o'clock for their three high schools there in Columbia. There's some other parts with that. Lori, would you kind of give us, come up and give us a summary of elementary feedback from our elementary schools? That we've been to all of them, again, except South, which we're going tomorrow. Would you just kind of give us a quick summary from an elementary staff standpoint?
So elementary staff, we've been, we've attended all of their buildings except South. Each one of our elementary buildings, teachers were wholeheartedly in favor of elementary starting early with the same reasoning that the elementary teachers that were here tonight gave with, students are already up, our littles are up early to begin with. Many of our little children are at Y Care before school. They have been there. Sometimes, when I was at Cedar Hill, starting at 6:30 up until 9 o'clock, some of our kids were there already. They've missed prime learning time when they are first up, alert, ready to go. Our buildings that start at 8 o'clock shared, you know, that they are ready. They, they get the kids right away, they're in there, they're learning. They get a great chunk of instructional time before our lunch periods start. And that is when our kids need to be learning to read and do math and write. When pulling all of my elementary principals, 100% of them signed in favor. They wanted it to go on record that they are in favor of the 8 o'clock or an earlier start time, that we can all be consistent. And one of the big reasons, and Jessica Long brought that up earlier tonight, was about the professional development that can take place across our district when all of us aren't consistent start times. So when you're talking about 11 schools, being able, even an extra hour to be, to bring all of our second grade teachers across the district together for PD, or a vertical team meeting after school, it's key. It's key to what we're learning. And they're always talking about, "We need time, we need time, and we need time to bring those teachers together." And when we are all on different start times, we can't do that. So I have 100% of my teacher, of my principals that are on board with wanting to go with the elementary starting first, early.
Okay, thank you for that. Gary, would you come give a summary from our secondary folks, please?
I did not pull all the secondary principals exactly like Lori did, but I have my pages of notes for each secondary school visit. And I would say that the majority of the comments from the secondary folks would be to keep them at their start time. I will follow that up with, most of the comments and the feedback was not research-based. It was more about probably conveniences or how it impacts them personally. None of it was research-based, like Dr. Kraus provided tonight. And, you know, the, probably the most prevalent comments were about students working, activities going an hour later. And, you know, I know in Jason's presentations, we talked about the conference that the district is joining, where Capitol City and Jefferson City will join the three Columbia schools, along with Elias and Sedalia. That's gonna help with travel time. I've also talked to the activities department that oversee. And we won't fix it all at one time, but we need to be conscientious of what we schedule and where. I think we can fix some of that mis-instructional time with scheduling as well. You know, yes, it would be neat to go to this tournament in this location, but if we're missing two school days, you know, are we, you know, those are things we need to pay attention to. I'm not saying we cut out everything. I've been an AD, I've been a head coach, I've been a parent of kids involved in activities. So I've had the opportunity to see it from many angles. And, you know, each person's gonna think and comment about how it impacts them. But again, at the secondary level, it wasn't so much about research-based, but just, you know, staff providing the input that we asked for. You know, how will this impact, and what are your thoughts? But again, you know, it wasn't so much research-based as it was just how it's gonna impact them.
You mentioned the conference, schools in the conference. Are all of the other schools in the conference, are they on a later start time, or?
The only ones I'm aware of are the Columbia ones. I'm not, I don't think Elias starts later. I don't know about Sedalia.
And we don't know about Sedalia.
Sedalia's not.
Okay.
But they're also local.
Correct, they are. And there are more schools. I know Park Hill is one that is currently in traditional, and they are. I know Jason, that conversation is of, of making that change. They're in the process right now.
In Jason's presentation, as we completely divide, and we have both high schools with four grades in them, our enrollment is going to be lower. And we will be able to find competition and be able to fill our schedules. With smaller schools, they'll be just geographically closer, there'll be more choices for us. And again, like Dr. Lintikum has said a couple of times, it's not like we're not ever gonna go to Kansas City, or St. Louis, or Springfield. But it will help, it'll certainly help.
Right. Okay, so Gary, thank you for that update. Jason, would you touch on as far as with operations and our three options?
So we really did have three options. One would be to do nothing, which, as, as we talked, as I've talked about in the presentation, it's just not efficient, what we're doing today, having elementary start times all over and trying to run a tiered system. It's not efficient dollar-wise, it's not efficient on the service that we're providing to our students and our staff. So doing nothing really doesn't make a lot of sense. We're not doing what's right for our teachers and staff at those 8:30 elementary schools. And then we would be spending $350,000 more dollars next year, where if we can make this change, we could save more than $150,000. So there's a $500,000 difference just in making one of the two changes. So now, the decision, it, it seems to be pretty clear that it just needs to be making a change now which one goes first.
Okay. Thank you on that.
Did you have a question?
I had a question.
Please.
What is the amount, if we all started at 8:30, across the board?
A million and a half dollars more than what we're spending today.
So that's not an option?
No.
Just wanted to make sure we knew that. Thanks.
Jason, were that to actually be where we ended up? That 1.5, I'm assuming, I wouldn't expect that you would know exactly where that's gonna come from right now, but, but the, the short answer would be out of the operating fund?
Absolutely. It would be things that we, we couldn't provide.
So those are dollars that are obligated today, in this current year budget, to whether it's building operations, or curriculum, or, you know, things to support the mission of the district?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay, Brenda, would you know Brian, I guess, Brian, sorry, Brian? So ask Brian basically kind of the research and what, as far as with savings of up to half million, as far as where that money could?
Right, so you heard a lot, a lot of information tonight about the research. So I don't wanna spend a lot of time going back over that. But I do wanna reference the Seattle study a little bit. So you may have heard, or going to hear, because we have, individuals who have made this comment. I've spoken to teenagers, and they tell me that they're just gonna stay up later if given that option. All I want, I guess what I wanna say is that every study that we've looked at shows, shows just the opposite of that. And in fact, in the, in the Seattle study, what they did was, they took, over a couple of years, they took over 178 students, and they actually attached monitors to them in order to monitor their activity. And here's what they found. That on school nights, only a few students stayed up later, but not enough to impact the average. What did change was the wake-up time, with morning activities starting about 45 minutes later on school days. And even more interesting is what they found was they, they expanded the study, and they compared what those differences look like in an affluent school and a non-affluent schools, to see if there were differences. And what they found is that the, there wasn't as much of change in the affluent schools, but the high school in the low-income areas had less tardiness and fewer absences after the change. A hint that later start times impact socioeconomic learning gaps that we have. So I'll just repeat a little bit of what you heard. They, what they found is about a 4.5% increase in the, in grades. They found improved attendance, fewer tardies, increased in daily sleep duration, better attention, more alertness, and better participation. And so those were the findings that they had. And I'll end with some comments made. One of the superintendents made this comment. "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good or better. Even 15 minutes is worth your consideration." Says, "School districts resist, resist later start times to avoid disrupting the bus schedule and sports practices, or robbing parents of afternoon teenage babysitters to watch younger kids. But the research shows there are benefits to making a change." And I just hope that we would take research into consideration. You already heard from some of our teachers and from Mrs. Ross about the benefit of getting all of our elementary teachers around the table at the same time, with getting start times the same. And so I'd encourage that. And then lastly, we have heard the question at town halls, "What are you going to do with the half million dollars?" We'd like to know. And so, I don't know what's going to, what the final decision will be with the half million dollars, but we do know this, that our, our priority focus right now is on student achievement. And more specific is in literacy. And we know that we have a lot of needs. We've invested a lot of time, energy, professional development, and money into the elementary side, and have done very little at the middle school level. And we have a great need at the middle school level. Been a lot of conversations over the last couple of months about programming that we could do at the middle school level. And we've had conversations about taking the middle school ELA department and separating those out, and having reading teachers and having writing teachers. Many of them will tell you now that they don't have the time of the day to, to cover all reading and all writing standards. It's a challenge. We believe we can support our students more thoroughly by dividing out those two pieces. And kids, instead of having four core, they would have five core. So instead of having just an ELA, you'd have a reading core, and you'd have a writing core.
Along with math, science?
Yes, so a total of five core. There are a lot of benefits in doing that. And so we've looked at what it would take staffing-wise in order to do that, take the current staff that we have in ELA. They would choose either reading or writing, and then we would have to hire staff. We'd be looking at adding an addition of about seven teachers to accomplish that goal, which comes out to about $425,000. And so when people ask, "Are there things we can do with that money, instead of investing in buses to help kids?" I think there are, there are ways that we can use that money to help support our students and our academic achievement. So I'd encourage you to at least consider those options.
Thank you, Brian. Brenda is going to come and give us an overview. One thing that came out with our town hall is after-school daycare, before-school daycare. So that is real. So she's gonna give us a report on that. And then she facilitated and led the student focus group input with our middle school and high school students. So Brenda, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll talk about after-school care. I think you have a copy of my report theoretically. So it was very exciting to talk to the providers that we have. I didn't know much of this. So our majority of our students are either in Boys and Girls Club or Y Care. That's not the only providers in our community, but those two are the primary providers, or the bulk of the providers. Y Care provides services both morning and afternoon at seven of our elementary schools. And two additional schools, actually, they bus-vet students over to the Y Care. So they actually serve nine of our schools, which is about 468 students at this point. They are very interested in expanding their program, and we talked about some things that we could do to partner with them. One of the big issues for both Boys and Girls Club and Y Care with expanding is they would then need a four-year degreed teacher in order to be their site administrator. But that person could actually be a part-time employee for them. And so we talked about ways that maybe we could help them recruit from our own teachers who might want to. I think they said it was like $30 an hour is what they were paying, or something really nice. So I thought for some of our teachers who might want to make some extra money, that might be an interesting way to, to do that. Is Stephanie saying, "No, she's not gonna pay that?"
It's not quite that.
Okay, sorry.
It was good.
It was good, okay, all right, I apologize. Maybe it was the Y Care that was better, I don't remember. But, but I thought that was an interesting way that we could do it. So Y Care is for members, $31.25 a week. And for a yearly, we're in school 10 months. For a yearly or a 10-month run, that would be $1,250 a year for a family. For our, if you were not a Y member, it's $38.75, and that would be $1,500 a year. Again, we're in school 10 months. So all I did was do that math. Boys and Girls Club, they're currently serving 180 elementary students and 60 secondary students at their Lafayette location. Then they've got another 75 at Callaway Hills, and 75 spots at Pioneer Trail. The site on Lafayette's open until 7 o'clock, which I think is pretty amazing. And they also feed the students after school, or feed them an evening meal. If you are not on free or reduced lunch, that is $75 a month, or $1,875 a week. And so that is for 10 months of care after school, that would be $750 a year. As Stephanie mentioned earlier, they are interested in expanding and are gonna look for other opportunities to help us fund something. And they think if they could receive an extra grant, they might be able to serve another 150 to 250 students in our community. Currently, their total is 330 elementary and 60 middle schoolers. So 468 students for the Y Care, and then 330 for Boys and Girls Club at this point. We contacted, we had staff, and Larry put a team together for me, thank you very much, 65 childcare providers were contacted by district staff and asked them, "Do you currently serve after-school care? How do you serve, and how much are your prices?" The majority of those were open until 5:30 or 6:00. A lot of them, shocking to me, use our bus service. So our first student buses drive people to, drive students to different daycares around town. And that was more prevalent than, than I even knew was even possible, and I had no idea that happened. The low price was $20 a week, or the high price was $52 a week. And that was for both morning and afternoon for those. And so some kids are being dropped off in the morning. One of our buses is picking them up, taking them to school. And then the evening, the bus is returning them back to that daycare. Some do currently pick up at elementary schools. They're interested in continuing to do that. They pick up at elementary schools based solely on who asks them to pick up where. It was not like, "Oh, we only serve West School," or "We only serve wherever." They served a variety of places, and were willing to continue to do that based on need. None of them saw a problem, with the exception of one program that currently picks up after-school on Wednesdays. It's a church-based program, and they have an after-school program where they are trying to pick up at all the elementary schools. And they said that would be very complicated for them. But they were the only ones who were concerned if we had a consistent start and end time for our elementaries. The only JCPS elementary school that does not have a private provider that currently serves them is Callaway Hills. We didn't have any in our list of 65. That does not mean that there's not a grandma out there, but this was 65 licensed facilities that we normally contact and work with. Any questions about after-school care?
Brenda, we do bus kids from Callaway Hills to Norah for after-school care.
Yes, and we have the Boys and Girls Club there. I was only meaning that they have nothing for private. So when you, when you actually talked to the 65 private people, So when you actually talk to the 65 private people, there was not one that said they currently serviced.
Brenda, do we have any before-school care for middle schoolers?
There is not at this point in any of these. However, we have talked about what we would provide. And we do provide some at this point that's ours. It's part of that $15,000 that Jason spends annually.
Okay.
(laughter) Please, they have so much. Thank you.
So we're saying that could potentially be expanded or?
I think Jason would tell me, yes, it has to be expanded. We would have to allow students to be dropped off early.
Right. And that would be staffed with our own people with the stipend or?
Correct.
Still figure out.
Okay.
With those children, their parents pay something for that time?
So anybody who we provide care for, so like right now at Lawson, the Y Care does not have a four-year degreed person, so they're licensed for 60 or 65 kids. Whatever the law is, is exactly what they have. So please don't quote me if I mis-said 65 and it was really 60. Once all those positions are filled, which they are at Lawson, we hire someone to come in and watch at no cost the other students who are being dropped off early. At cost to Jason, no cost to families. Any other questions about my after-care? Okay. So student focus groups. Ryan and I have spent the month of February and we met with approximately seven students, I'm sorry, 70 students. We spoke to 10 eighth graders from LC, 10 eighth graders from TJ, 29th grade students at Simonsen in two groups. And then we had two groups of 15 10th graders and 15 11th graders from the high school. And it was fascinating to listen to them. And some of them are very opinionated and have a lot to share with us.
No.
I think, I do have to shout out to the counselors because the counselors did a phenomenal job. So everybody said, "This has got to be a diverse group. You cannot just bring in, you know, student council or you just can't bring in, you know, Brenda Halffield just doesn't get to pick her own kid." I mean, none of that. It has to be a diverse group. So we did have kids who were involved in activities. We had kids who have jobs either after-school or weekend. We had kids who ride the bus. We have kids who provide after-school care for younger siblings. We had kids who have never participated in a school activity and have no desire to participate in school activity. We had people who participated in honors or AP classes. We had kids who were struggling academically and we had students of varying genders, ethnicities, races. They were all amazing. And I really appreciated the fact that there wasn't one kid who didn't want to tell a story and who didn't want to share with us. So that was pretty exciting. So in this, I'm going to, we tried to summarize it. We talked about later start times for secondary students might allow for more sleep. Many of the kids, shocking to me, and granted, I have a 21-year-old and a 17-year-old, so I don't know why I'm surprised, many of them indicated that they routinely go to bed at 11:00 PM or later. Doesn't matter what day of the week it is. And I was a little shocked because I don't believe that's what's happening in my house because I'm asleep by then. So I really don't know, but anyway.
Yeah, no, no.
I don't know. I mean, I was hoping.
She's just in bed.
She's just quiet, that's all I'm saying.
I think there's a spy camera's going to be installed in the field now.
Exactly. Some students felt that the current start times, with the current start time, their brains really weren't kicking in till first block. And what was interesting to me is they would be committed to one story. They would say, "Oh, no, no, don't change our start time." And then you would ask them about, "How do you feel in the morning?" They're like, "Well, I don't really think until second block." And I'm like, "Wait a minute. Is your first block easy? I mean, do you have chemistry first block?" So that was really fascinating to me that they fully admitted they don't go to bed early, as early as they should. And they're not really thinking till after first block anyway. So I was like, "Okay, that makes them not feel good." Some indicated that they thought their personal attendance would increase because they might be able to get out of bed if they had an extra hour of sleep. And I was like, "Okay, interesting." They had, there was a theory that elementary students may perform better at an earlier start time. We had given them that as an option. What was fascinating is we actually went around and asked them all to tell us what elementary school they went to and what middle school. And so all of those who attended a nine o'clock start elementary school pretty much admitted to being dropped off by 7:30. And all of them said, "Oh yeah, I was exhausted by, you know, by 4:00 and I didn't want to pay attention, I get that." But then they would turn around and say, "Yeah, but the elementary kids, they should be able to adjust anything. They're, you know, so do whatever too." So it's just fascinating. Students who have longer bus rides were concerned about a later bus ride. They were saying to me, you know, "Look, if you don't get us out of school till 3:50 and I have an hour on the bus, it'll be dark by the time I get home." Certain times of the year it will be, other times it won't be. So I understood that. Students who ride a K-12 bus though, said, "That's not really ideal. You need to rethink that." And they really felt like that was probably not the best thing for them or the kids. There was a strong position on those kids who have academic or an activity after school that, you know, they were concerned. Does this mean I don't get, you know, Georgia's in show choir practices until 6 o'clock. Does that mean I don't get off till 7 o'clock? Mr. James, at least at the high school level, did a good job of talking about zero hour with them. And there are some things that the high school was looking at. The weight training and some of those other things are actually, we're looking at, and Gary can speak to this, actually having those be a class. So in a seven-block setting, you could potentially have that as a class. And some of them were interested in that. We did not have firm answers for them on that, so they were a little suspicious of some of us on that. There was concern about having enough time to complete homework, even from those kids who didn't have activities. "Well, you've taken an hour out of my day." Very few even thought that they could get up early and do homework in the morning, which is interesting, but it was their perspective. Under family concerns, approximately 25 to 30% of the students reported taking care of younger siblings, although these kids many times were also reporting that they were in activities. So when you follow up and say, "Okay, you told me you were in, you know, band, so what happens to your sibling?" Because clearly you have after-school practices or you have after-school whatever. They would always say, "Well, we use Boys and Girls Club," or "My parents put the child in Y Care," or "My parents just picked the child up that I'm watching." So while we thought that was going to be a bigger problem, it appears that the families of the kids that we were talking to have alternate plans already ready. And so it wasn't as big of a concern as I think Ryan and I thought going in. At the high school in Simonsen, 40 to 50% of those kids reported that they had work, either weekend or part-time jobs. And they were concerned about getting enough hours in. We had a couple of young people, just two or three, who say they support their families. And they were concerned about losing an hour of wages because their families depended upon them to make money. In that particular, one particular case, the student had no idea about work-study. And so we'd met with the counselors afterwards and asked the counselors to pull the student out and talk to this individual. Because students can take work-studies at class and would be able to leave school earlier if that's something that their family needs them to be able to do. But it was a concern. 40 to 50%, of kids did not like, did not think we should do any more change. This was no more prevalent than at the high school. And it was, "You are making us do all sorts of things. We had to switch to Chromebooks. Do you see the construction?", like we didn't walk through it. We just, we were there at the high school the day that they had changed how they can come in and out of the building. So they were very fired up about the fact that they had been asked to do too many changes. And so they should be, you know, just not have to do any more changes in their entire lives because of that. A majority of students indicated that being used to a schedule is enough of a reason to not change. We did have some students acknowledge though that while change is hard, it does usually benefit you in the end, it's just really rough those first few weeks. In summary, I would say a third of the kids were vehemently opposed to any change. A third thought it was a good idea and would benefit them. There was a middle third who would have an opinion and then turn around and explain their opinion to me in such a way that they contradicted what their opinion was. So I think those are either really resilient children who like to change and who really listen to others' opinions, or they weren't really committed to their decision. It's kind of, it was kind of a mixed bag.
Call it low border intensity.
It was fascinating. When you would just contradict yourself, I was like, "Okay, all right." But it was a great time with the students and we really appreciated their input.
Great report. Before you give this to Philip, please.
Oh, you have a typo?
Please check, yeah. The second bullet under academic and sports activities.
Oh, gosh, Philip, don't read.
It says sin. Sin activities.
Well, we have some sin activities. What can I do?
I'm hoping.
Oh, no. Yeah, well, I told you, it was, we had lots of conversations. We'll get that fixed.
Just don't let that be. Paper tomorrow.
Work with him.
That's all we do.
Other questions for me?
Okay, so I got one more. Ryan, you guys got any questions for Brenda on that? One more here. Ryan was just going to kind of summarize, highlight the two town halls.
Yes.
That some of you were there, but just highlight.
Some of you were there. Thank you for joining us.
As our director of communications, please.
Uh-huh. And I wanted to just kind of start by giving a communications perspective a little bit that we did start having conversations about start and end times with our social media audience after the December board meeting. And I think in general, the first few posts that we made, we got a lot of engagement from our parents, from people in the community. And one of the things I thought was really interesting, especially because those of us that are on social media frequently see that sometimes the quality of the engagement deteriorates quickly and it's not altogether positive or constructive. But I thought that the exchanges that we had on our social media posts were helpful. They were parents saying, "Hey, we had this issue and this is how we solved it." Or, you know, "We fought that same challenge when we had a middle school student and an elementary student at the same time and this is what we found worked for us." So that was, I think, nice and uplifting and we all kind of shared that collectively as a positive amongst ourselves that there was a lot of that constructive feedback and exchange happening on our social media channels. We then started promoting the two community town halls and we posted them as events on our Facebook page. We made several posts in the months and weeks leading up to it. We sent notices to our full database of parents within the district, giving them a heads-up, save the date that these events are coming. Ultimately, I think we had approximately 40 in attendance at each of our two town halls. We had another 10 to 20 who engaged in the live stream online, just like Nicole said earlier. I think that was helpful and people appreciated that. We went through the format where we presented a PowerPoint of some of the district pros and cons, expenses, our rationale for why we were looking at the change. We then invited participants to leave comments or questions on post-it notes at the back of the room where we could collect those, put them up on a screen so that everyone could look at them together. And then we broke into groups to talk about the pros and cons that we as district leadership had identified for each of the scenarios, elementary, secondary, first. Gathered all that back together, talked through the comments, answered as many of their questions and concerns that we could as a group. I think for the most part, you know, there were a few pros and cons, but for the most part, ours that we had listed covered the gamut pretty well. The most common questions and concerns resonated around the cost of before and after school, the question of whether we had engaged with students to see what they felt about the potential for change. And then just how it would impact family time at home for those activities that run later or those students that are working, would they have less time to spend with their families and also doing homework and things like that that would push their bedtimes back later in the evening? I think the majority, the bulk of those concerns, we have rectified by going out and gathering more feedback from the daycare providers like Brenda shared, from the student focus groups, and looking for ways ultimately to adjust our scheduling if needed, to add zero-hour courses or address some of the concerns about activities or the weight-lifting class examples like that, that would help hopefully answer some of those concerns and address those for our families. So I think honestly, one of the prime takeaways, as we've talked about this with staff and other parents, is that they recognize that change is pain, but that they will begin making accommodations as quickly as you all are able to make a decision. And ultimately, they'll be ready to plan accordingly and put those plans into place. And I think that they'll be appreciative of having a decision and having an opportunity to make those plans for the coming school year.
So thank you, Ryan.
Yes.
So we've been talking about this a lot. So here's basically where we are. What we included as two options that we, that were included at the town halls had a 7:55 and an 8:55 start times, I believe, for our elementary and our high school. Option one, I believe, was 7:55 for our elementary and 8:55, was it 7:50? 7:50 for our elementary and 8:55 for our high school. Our second option, that was basically just reversed, that high school would go early and elementary would be second. I asked the question, what we felt the likelihood of either one of those options, what did we think the likelihood that that same schedule would be in place five years from now? Was a question that I asked. And I didn't have a gut feeling that in five years, one of those, and it was option one was the secondary going later and elementary first, as I said here at the very beginning. So we asked Frank to basically, of the high school at 8:55, if they bumped that to 8:45 and the middle school went to 8:55 instead of 8:45. And the reason being on that, our high school students have more activities, they're working. Not that we don't have some middle school students, but that would make sense to do that. So what we would like to do tonight, and I think we agree, and like a blessing to move forward with, and I've got some options here that I'll share with you, but we talk about learning, we talk about stewardship, the partnership aspect. When we had our school calendars, we asked our stakeholders to vote. Okay, so what we'd like to do is to have our elementary go first and our secondary go second, but then ask our folks to vote, it'll be live tomorrow, to vote with three options that we have from option A, which is our, and let me back up here because I know you're all, where's he going here? Our secondary folks, our secondary coaches, okay, concerns about practices are real, okay? Secondary teachers, okay? At the end of the day, our elementary folks and our secondary folks all wanted to go first, okay? It's no different than in my house with my four kids. My son always wants to go first, okay? So we understand that is real and not to make light of it, but where is that, that at the end of the day, what is best for kids? And you can't argue against the research, okay? Dr. Kraus, thank you for that. But other research that we've looked at, from Columbia to Eldon here locally, with student learning and what that would look like. So what we would like to do to move forward with is to get your blessing, we're not asking for your approval, that will be at our March board meeting as we have indicated in the past, to move forward with having elementary first and our secondary second. And I have three options of options A, B, and C. And those options are, option A is elementary starting at 7:40 and the high school starting at 8:35, okay? Option B, and Philip, I'll get you a copy, you can have a sheet here. Option B, I'll just pass these here to you guys as a board. Option B is elementary starting at 7:45 and the high school starting at 8:40. And then option C is elementary at 7:50 and the high school starting at 8:45. And in each of those three, the middle school would be 10 minutes after that. So all three of those have secondary starting after 8:30 from 8:35 to 8:45. We'll ask our community, we'll ask stakeholders, we'd like our students and our staff and our parents and our community members, all stakeholders, to vote, as we did when we had Capital City High School. We asked folks for their response, that we say we're stronger together and ask for their input and bring those results back to you at our March board meeting with these three options. But all three of those, and I don't mean to, I want to be clear here, has elementary going first and our secondary going second. Okay, so we're not asking, "Well, why didn't you give us that choice?" We feel based on research, based on our learning, that, because the stewardship piece, we could save the money if elementary went second and secondary went first, but it doesn't have that learning piece that as we all know, and the graduation rates, our attendance rates, our student achievement, to become a premier school district, those are real. And so that's why, was there a sweet spot that wasn't 8:55 for high school but was 8:35 or 8:40? I mean, that's 15, 20 minutes possible differences that we think could make, talking with high school folks, a significant difference. And that we can do that, having the high school start before the middle school versus the other way around in the options. So that's the three that we're going to ask our community with your blessing. Again, we're not asking for your approval, we'll bring those results back to you here at our March board meeting with a formal recommendation at that time.
One question. So this allows, the 55 minutes between elementary and high school allows for us to accomplish the tiered routes? Because I know at one time we had been talking about the ideal or optimum was an hour between those two in order to tier all the routes. But you're saying that this 55-minute difference between elementary and high school does accomplish that?
Right. Ideal would be an hour, but we've been working this ever since November on the assumption of 55 minutes.
Okay.
And when we ran it, if we tried to shrink it to 50, it just, there are even fewer routes that can be double-tiered and we'd get into the service issue and it would just not be good. We really need that 55 minutes.
And we think potentially, this coming fall is a year with, we're starting school a week and a half later because of construction. Limits are, we think that potentially in the future, if we move back to the normal start time, that gives us a little more flexibility where we could potentially shorten the school day a shade. day a shade and, you know, gain five minutes or 10 minutes. We could do some other potential things, but we don't have as many options right now with starting school a week and a half later to be able to get our required hours that we're required to get our state aid. So, that's, that stewardship piece has a capital S on that one, so we don't want to mess with that. We know that. So, what other questions or comments do you guys have at this time?
Are we going to have additional opportunities for input from the community besides, I mean, are there any other organized, you know, efforts to collect any additional input other than this online voting?
Tomorrow, I have radio in the morning, I have coffee with Larry on Friday, and then as an agenda item at our March board meeting. But as, and then South Elementary tomorrow, so there's four. But as far as community-wide, town halls are not scheduled at this time. But we've tried making very apparent, if you have any questions, come see me and we'll, you know, have a cup of coffee to discuss options and to do that.
So, do you need a motion or?
Well, I, I think a, not really a motion, I mean, the, I think a blessing to move forward with, we're asking to, as far as have with elementary first and secondary second. We're not asking for your approval of what those times are because we'll do that at our March board meeting. But I would like a straw vote or a, that's okay to move forward with that, of having elementary first and our secondary second.
I think that's what the research.
I think it's pretty hard to overcome the, the research that's there.
I think what you heard this evening is fairly compelling in terms of the possible impact, the potential positive impact that it could have on our students in addition to the cost avoidance that Jason's talked about for the last couple of months. And just to clarify that point, because we talked a lot in community engagements and radio and interacting with just one-on-one, you know, we're talking about money that's already been allocated in this year's budget, right? I mean, this isn't, there's not an additional revenue source for the $1.5 million you referenced before. So, it, it would be coming out of the current operating budget like I kind of referenced earlier.
So, it's really a cost avoidance. Because if we don't do anything, we're going to spend more. If we make a change, we spend less. So, there is $150,000 of savings. That's money that we've spent this year that is not going to be spent next year. But the $500,000, the total is really, most of it is cost avoidance of future expenses. So, in March, when I come to you, we're going to be doing the preliminary budget. So, that, that has an impact, you know? I bring you the line of changes. And so, that line for transportation, for time changes, either going to say we have to spend $350,000 more dollars, so now that money isn't available to hire more staff, to give raises, to hire, buy supplies, do more transportation routes. Instead of it having a $350,000 increase, it'll have a $150,000 savings. So, that is now money freed up to hire staff, do all those things. And that's annual.
I think that there's just been a couple of areas where that's been maybe a little confusing to folks, so just thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
So, I think the, what we had shared before, that we'd have a recommendation tonight as in like a first reading, and our recommendation is that our elementary schools will go first and our secondary will go second, and we want to open it up to the community. I didn't feel comfortable with giving option one or two. I didn't think that was the sweet spot. And I think here with these three options, to give our community, we talk about being stronger together and we value our stakeholder input. And Ryan will be ready to release that tomorrow and we'll bring those results back to you with formal recommendation here at our March board meeting.
So, will we continue to do due diligence as far as some researches, finding areas of the families that are affected as far as the before and after solutions to?
You mean daycare? Well, I think, I mean, there's still conversations here and as we look at what those options would look like, look like our schools, I know Stephanie had mentioned, Stephanie had mentioned about what options or additional or grants. We know those are real and we, we take those seriously to provide, making sure that we can provide options for our families to provide daycare.
I think the community partnerships.
There are still, there are still openings at both Y Care and Boys' and Girls' Club after school right now. Not, maybe the location you might want them in, but there are still openings right now.
Other thoughts? Scott, Lindsay?
I think we've heard some good, good stuff. My only, the 7:40 elementary thing, kind of turning my knot, my stomach a little bit. What time would a kindergarten or a first grader have to be outside to catch a bus for 7:40 to start?
Well, we know that because it'll be just elementary students on there and our average elementary bus route, Jason, is 25 minutes, okay?
That's the average.
That's the average. Right. So, if you're saying average and have them there by 7:10 to be able to eat breakfast, so, 6:45, that's.
There'd probably be less than 20 minutes before break. Yeah. But there would be more elementary buses to be able to be ran as well. So, that would reduce the overcrowding of buses and reduce the running time of the runs, so, there'd be more buses out there. But we would, we would want the bus at the school 20 minutes before because that bus needs to run that secondary route and get those students there 15 or 20 minutes before so they can have breakfast.
Right.
So, they would, we would have the buses getting there about 7:20, so.
So, 6:55 on average.
6:55 would be the first on average.
But there would be some that maybe 6:45 will recognize. We don't anticipate a 6:05 like that we have now. Sure. Because with elementary and secondary, some of those on the same routes, we'll be able to have just elementary students on the bus, which those will be shorter routes. There are more neighborhood routes because of the, the increased number of schools for those.
Sure. Rich, anything?
I think if we're not presented with a moan tonight, Larry, you should go forward with, with what you feel is best here as you've presented to us and bring it back to the board tomorrow.
And that was the plan to, as in with our calendars, we have a first reading, and that is the, the plan with having elementary first and then we'll come back with the results of these. We think these three that can meet are transportation times and to be able to deliver. And I understand the 7:40, on the other side of it's got the, the high school starting at 8:35. And so, you've still got that, that window and trying to meet that. And is there a sweet spot of where that is? So, let's ask our folks who run this together.
Right.
Okay, that's all I have. We'll move forward with this and we'll put this up live tomorrow and.
Thank you.
We'll give you a copy of this.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. A lot of work going into this, appreciate it.
A lot of work.
Yeah. Still more work to come, but good effort. Next item of business, motion to adjourn closed session. Laura, you.
Community partnerships.
Close up.
What's community partnerships?
I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Quite right.
Sorry. Right ahead, please.
Okay.
Community partnerships. I'm mistaken a little bit.
So, I just wanted to kind of give an overview, I'm not asking for your approval, but just wanted to touch on the area of our community partnerships. We have many community partnerships. We talk about being stronger together. We have partnerships with each of our schools. Many of our churches partner with our schools and do tremendous things. We, the, the list is, is numerous on the number of partnerships that we have. Two things that have been brought to us, one about a year and a half ago was the JAG program, which is Jobs for America's Graduates. Here in the last three or four months, we've had the.
Junior Achievement.
Junior Achievement, thank you. Both of those are great programs. As you can see, we have one or two things going on as a school district with regards to start times and scheduling and building of Capital City and the renovations at Jeff City High School. So, I just wanted to touch on that we value our community partnerships. I know Junior Achievement does some great things. It's not asking the, the school district for any dollars. They go to our local businesses and ask them for donations. I'm very sensitive to that because I know our businesses are, are very giving and, and I, but I want to be very careful and not take advantage of that or cross the line on that. So, I just wanted to touch on that we are looking at that. For example, the two there, the Junior Achievement and the JAG, which is Jobs for America's Graduates, are great programs, both of them. I encourage you to Google both of those. They are great things. I know the First Lady, Governor Parsons, came up some time ago. I met with them a year and a half ago, looking at JAG. And I'm, we're very interested in that because we want to ensure jobs for all of our graduates. And the Junior Achievement, the leadership skills that they teach. Has anybody in here been a part of Junior Achievement in the room? Okay, so much for that one. It's a great program and there are communities that have that. We do some part of Junior Achievement at West Elementary right now and they do a